Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 16th, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Mayor Pro Tem Wen excused this evening, and with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. So the first item on our agenda this evening is Item 2A, which is Special Recognition for Veteran Suicide Prevention Vehicle Emblems. And here to present to us this evening, we have Jaime Mustache, who is the Fleet Operations Supervisor here at the City of Olympia, and Don Cissé, the Prevention Program Specialist from the Washington State Department of Veteran Affairs. Hello, Jaime.
Hello. Good afternoon. I would like to start off by saying that I'm super proud to be part of this and for you guys to be able to support this purchase of the emblem. As a veteran myself, I know that this is a big issue that impacts veterans. But the good thing about this is that it's not just impactful for veterans, but for all who need crisis response prevention, suicide prevention, they have somewhere to call. We have purchased 200 emblems. They should be on their way. We do have one here to show everybody what they would look like or what they're going to look like. And as soon as we receive those, we're going to start installing them on all the city vehicles, from the police department down to the backhoes and tractors. So anything that has a license plate, we're going to start installing them right away. And it's a very good program. Solomon Gilbert is the Deputy Director for the Veterans Affairs and Washington Department of Veteran Affairs, and he would like to say a couple of words on the program.
And good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you. I'm Solomon Gilbert. I'm the Deputy Director of your Washington Department of Veterans Affairs. Just have a few quick talking points to show our gratitude and thanks. I'm a U.S. Army veteran, so this strikes home for me and is really great. But I want to personally thank the City of Olympia for leading the way and really setting example on how our communities can join the fight in preventing suicide. Your commitment today will generate awareness about the 988 Crisis Lifeline. It will also raise funds for suicide prevention efforts for veteran service members and families. Veterans make up 7% of Washington State's population. However, 18% of all suicides in our state are service members. At your Washington Department of Veterans Affairs, we're committed to building a suicide prevention program that focuses on empowering our communities, creating safer, more supportive environments where individuals have access to help and where every life is valued and protected. We know community participation helps break down the stigma surrounding mental health and suicide. When people openly discuss these issues and share their experiences, it creates a supportive environment where individuals feel more comfortable seeking to help when needed. Having the City of Olympia become a partner and display the 988 emblems where they will be visible in neighborhoods throughout the city creates a feeling of ownership and shared responsibility for suicide prevention. By purchasing the 988 Lifeline Emblem, Washington residents are supporting a special fund which will be used for community-based grants and organizations to provide suicide prevention through peer support for transitioning veterans, military members, and their families. With the funds raised since the emblem became available in late 2022, I'm excited to share that we're in the process of reviewing applications for our first community-based grant. Great job, team and community. So thank you for your partnership, your vision, investment in community, and joining us as we serve those who serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Solomon. Any questions or comments from the dais? Councilmember Parshley.
When you're speaking of the entire fleet of Olympia, are you also referring to the police squad cars and the fire trucks?
For the police department, yes. The fire trucks, that would be done through the Fire Fleet Department for purchasing those.
Okay, just wondering. I want to make sure that we get them all on all the vehicles. I think that's a very great program.
And I have talked to Adam Cummings about it, and he's, they are going to order some. They just haven't yet.
Good. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? I do have a question, Solomon. Is this an initiative that the department, I would imagine, is probably doing for cities across the state? So how many cities have you gotten to do this?
So as City of Olympia is leading the way as the first city for this initiative, and we're hoping to do more. We are going to actively seek, and the suicide prevention team is out in the community, doing the work to get everyone on board for this. Our goal is to reach other cities throughout Washington to do this work, but Olympia is the first, and we thank you all for that.
Thank you very much. Well, hopefully, we'll have more joining us soon. And as a veteran, myself and Councilmember Cooper are Army veterans, and we're very much appreciative of this. This is an example of something that's come out of public comment when Don came and spoke, and he pitched this to us, and we, it wasn't on our radar at all. He came and spoke, and as a result, you're here today, and now we have, we're going to have these on our license plates of our city vehicles. So we're very proud to be the first, and thank you very much for being here tonight. Councilmember Parshley.
This is more for our communications person over there. Is there any way we can get on our Facebook, one of the first decals on the cars, one of our fleet, to boost out what we're doing? Good, thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I echo the mayor's comments. We're really grateful to be able to do this. And I think it'd be a little more fun if we, like, threw down a challenge to our neighboring jurisdictions in our social media. I mean...
You do meet with them once a month, don't you? Why don't you take a license plate into that meeting?
So I'll just, maybe we sprinkled some fairy dust on the communication.
Okay, yeah. And I have a three-cities meeting this Friday, so I'll mention it there as well. All right. Well, thank you very much, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And thank you both for your service, and thank you all. Thank you.
All right. Actually, I believe we're supposed to take a photo with you, Solomon. So you can come on up here, just to the stairs here, and we'll join you in a second. All right. So we will move on to our next agenda item, 2B, which is a proclamation recognizing Olympia Bicycle Month, which will be read by Councilmember Vanderpool.
Whereas riding a bicycle can improve physical and mental health, and whereas bicycling is one of the cleanest and most energy-efficient forms of transportation, and whereas bicycling can connect many community members to opportunities and resources without the need to own or maintain a car, and whereas bicycling instead of driving can help us reduce traffic congestion and reach the greenhouse gas emission reduction targets identified in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, and whereas the City of Olympia has a bicycle network which includes a bicycle corridor, 82 miles of bicycle lanes, and eight miles of regional trail system within the city limits, and whereas the city transportation master plan includes projects to expand the bicycle network, and whereas the city street safety plan prioritizes the safety of bicyclists among other vulnerable users of the street, and whereas intercity transit, with the support of many local businesses and organizations, is hosting the 37th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge during the month of May and Bike to Work Day on May 16th, 2024. Now, therefore, be resolved in recognition of the 54th Earth Day and the 67th National Bike Month, the City of Olympia hereby proclaims the month of May 2024 as Olympia Bicycle Month. In the City of Olympia, it encourages all community members to ride their bikes during the month of May and throughout the year. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, the 16th day of April 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderpool. And now we have Kristin Gilkerson, a Program Specialist from the City of Olympia, and Duncan Green from the Bicycle Community Challenge Coordinator at InterCity Transit.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Payne and members of City Council. My name is Kristin Gilkerson. I'm a Transportation Program Specialist with the City of Olympia, and tonight, we're here to celebrate Olympia Bike Month and also learn more about InterCity Transit's Bicycle Community Challenge this May. I am joined here with Duncan Green from InterCity Transit. He has some great things to share about the BCC. But before I pass it off, I did want to share a few highlights about upcoming transportation projects that support bicycling in Olympia. So first, I wanted to highlight the Boulevard Trail Crossing Project. This is between the Union Avenue Pathway and Wheeler Avenue. Construction's already started, you might have noticed, and this will extend the bike corridor from Lyons Park down to the regional trails network and also improve the crossings for cyclists and pedestrians in that area. Next is the downtown bike corridor. This project will provide a low-stress bike route from downtown to the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail entrance on East Side Street. And finally, the Phones Road Corridor Project kicks off this summer. So this project will transform Phones Road, make it safer for cyclists, pedestrians, and drivers on this major corridor. And the two parts of this project that support cycling are a fully separated bike lane along both sides of Phones Road, and also an improved crossing at the Woodland Trail. So if community members want to learn any more about these projects, they are all available online at the city's transportation page. So that's olympia-wa.gov/transportation. And I will pass it on to Duncan to learn about the BCC. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin. And for the record, my name is Duncan Green. I'm representing InterCity Transit and the Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge. Just want to say thank you, Mayor Payne, and council members for proclaiming May as Bicycle Month in the City of Olympia. May is also National Bike Month, as noted in the proclamation, and our month-long Bicycle Community Challenge is our local celebration of National Bike Month, along with our celebration of Bike to Work Day, which is on May 16th this year. So since 1988, the BCC has been encouraging people to use a bike for some of their transportation needs instead of driving. And as a result of recent changes in how we work and commute, we've opened up the challenge to our whole community three years ago now. So for all reasons for biking, to involve more people and encourage them to enjoy and benefit from all the good things that riding a bike can bring, both individually and as a community. Of course, we hope that recreational riding can open the door for some people to try riding for transportation, too. Bicycling for health and fun is beneficial to individual and community health and well-being, and riding a bike to get around only increases those benefits. So this year's theme, we have a new theme every year. This year's theme for the BCC is "Many Riders, Many Reasons, One Planet," and that's to bring attention back to the earth under our feet, our diverse community, and our finite global home. So the BCC and all of our events are free of charge, and everyone is encouraged to participate, just like our clean, safe, comfortable buses and dial-lift paratransit service. We celebrate Earth Day every year with a kickoff event for the BCC called the Earth Day Market Ride, which this year falls on April 20th, which is this coming Saturday, and I hope to see you all there. There are seven rides converging from seven different directions around the Olympia area. We all converge on the Heritage Park Fountain right downtown, and from there, after prize drawings and hoopla, we all bike together over to the farmer's market. We'll have police volunteers and a couple officers helping us with traffic getting through downtown on our way to the market, which is really awesome. And it's just a ton of fun. So you can find out about all the different starting points and all the details at the BCC website, bcc.inercitytransit.com. BCC has over 40 local and regional sponsors supporting the BCC with everything from donating prize items, offering discount coupons and free passes, support for our events, and more. So we have lots of great prizes and amazing community support. It's almost time to ride in the Bicycle Community Challenge and celebrate our planet and our 37th year of promoting bicycling in Thurston County. Going to go just off-script for just two seconds here. May is National Bike Month. April is National Distracted Driving Awareness Month. And it's my job to ask people to get out and ride their bikes in our community. And there's some perception and some truth to the notion that it's not as safe as it used to be to ride a bike. So I'd just like to offer a plea to people who drive cars and other motorized vehicles in our community to hang up and drive. Just look out for each other and look out for the more and more people that you'll see on bikes as spring progresses, and pedestrians as well. So thanks for that. And it's really easy to participate as an individual or a member of a team in the BCC. Just go to bcc.inercitytransit.com to sign up or log into your existing account. Feel free to reach out to me at any time with questions. My email is degreen@intercitytransit.com, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have now, too. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Duncan. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Parshley, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
I love participating in the Bicycle Community Challenge every year. It used to be, like, more of a challenge for me because now I telecommute, and like, my commute is really just 10 steps to my dining room. But I do think more about, like, oh, you know, if I can't walk or bus there easily, like, bike, that is an option for me as well. And I think about that more when there's a challenge in front of me, though I'm never going to be near the top of, with some folks who bike all over the place. But since we, you know, since there was a challenge for the last recognition to challenge other cities around the license plate emblem, I'll just put out a challenge here. I know there's three council members that I know of who've been a part of the challenge in the past, and maybe, maybe we'll get more this year, huh?
Councilmember Parshley.
Well, to answer Councilmember Madron, I first have to ask the question, do you let e-bikes in?
We do, yes.
Oh, then you're on. You're on. Yeah, I was just asked, do I have to do double the miles?
No, it's less about competition now. We do encourage a little friendly competition between the teams, and there has been a little friendly rivalry between the InterCity Transit team and the City of Olympia team over the years.
Ooh.
So.
Tell us more.
But it's not necessarily about how many miles you ride.
Just getting on the bike and riding.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gilman.
Well, I like this idea. We just keep talking about challenges we're going to throw down. So this, the last couple of years, I have to admit, I've ridden for Team InterCity Transit. But this year, this year, along with my council colleagues, I'm going to get my days of riding logged as part of Olympia's team because we're going to encourage Lacey and Thurston County and Tumwater to bring their best, their best efforts. And I agree, Duncan, that it's not as safe as it used to be, because when I was a kid, my mom would tell me to go ride in traffic, so it must have been safe, right? That's, I'm pretty sure. And I just wanted to underscore, you said, you know, enjoy all the good things that bicycling brings, because it certainly is a great form of transportation, but it also has health benefits and environmental benefits for the whole community that, that make it just a real win. And I wanted, in our, in our staff reports over this last year or two, we've been adding a climate analysis and an equity analysis. I just wanted to read the two sentences at the end of the equity analysis. It says, "Building streets that work better for more people is the focus of Olympia's Transportation Master Plan. We can make our transportation system more fair by changing our streets to better serve people who cannot or choose not to drive." So it's more equitable, it's more opportunity for more people, and it has all those good benefits for your own person. So thank you for continuing to lead us, Duncan.
Well, thank you for all that and for all the improvements that the city has been making to the infrastructure over the years. Really, that is very much appreciated.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Vanderpool.
You know, I'm, I, before I was on council, I was on BPAC, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And, you know, I, I believe that in order to get where we want to go, where we hit that, that critical mass, right, where we have more people riding bikes, and it's become accepted, not just as people who, like me, who are brave enough to go ride out at 6:30 or 5:30 in the morning to, out to Tumwater every day, but for people who, you know, would feel safe if we had that infrastructure. I'm glad we're making those steps. I really am. And, but I would also like to add, even though it is Bicycle Month, that, you know, in order to really hit a standard, I think that the thing that isn't mentioned the most is ADA compliance and allowing that people who, who can't ride a bike and are reliant upon wheelchairs and access, those folks are also be considered in our, on our standards going forward.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? I just have one, and that is that I have a freshly signed proclamation for you, Duncan, so I will present you with it now. All right. Thank you very much. So we will move on to Item 2C, which is also a special recognition item, which is a proclamation recognizing National Community Development Month, which will be read by Councilmember Madron.
Thank you, and thanks for asking me to read this one. I'm a big fan of the Community Development Block Grant. We've done a lot of things in our community with it, and block grants are generally extremely flexible for the recipients to be able to target towards our biggest priorities. And I recently had an opportunity to go on a tour of a couple of our sites with Mayor Payne and Congresswoman Strickland. One was a rehabilitation of an affordable rental unit, and another was rehabilitation of a, an owned unit. It was a manufactured home. And so those are examples of some recent projects that we've done, but, okay, on with the proclamation. Whereas, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program in 1974 for the purpose of providing local governments with the financial resources to assist low and moderate income persons. And whereas, the City of Olympia has administered $15,482,991 in CDBG funding to vital needs in our community since 1982. And whereas, the month of April has been designated as National Community Development Month to recognize and celebrate the CDBG program. And whereas, the CDBG program has suffered significant funding cuts since its implementation in 1974. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim the month of April as National Community Development Month in the City of Olympia in support of this valuable program that has made tremendous contributions to the vitality of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. Be it further resolved, that we urge Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally with CDBG funds by providing increased funding for this program in fiscal year 2025. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, the 16th day of April 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
And now we have Anastasia Everett, who is the Community Development Block Grant Program Manager here at the city, who's going to provide a presentation for us this evening.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Anastasia Everett, and I manage the city's Community Development Block Grant program. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about the CDBG grant and the incredible impact it has on our community. National Community Development Month was created in 1986 to bring attention to the CDBG program at a time when the program was facing scrutiny by Congress. This is an annual event held intentionally during congressional appropriations to allow for a concerted grassroots effort and voice to be heard on the importance of the CDBG program and its impact on communities nationwide. States and cities across the country are celebrating April as National Community Development Month. This year is the CDBG's 50th anniversary. Olympia has been receiving CDBG funds as an entitlement community for 42 years, beginning in 1982. In those years, we have received $15.48 million in CDBG funding to support community development activities to build stronger and more resilient communities. Olympia had a robust participation in this year's National Community Development Campaign. From April 1st to 5th, we had daily e-news and social media posts that highlighted important projects in our community and in the last program year. We also participated in a project court, project tour with Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland and staff from the offices of U.S. Senators Maria Cantwell and Patty Murray. Pictured here was our first stop at the site of one of our rental rehabilitation products funded by the revolving loan fund program. We also visited the home of Lynn Aragwin. She is a homeowner who received critical home repair from one of our CDBG subrecipients rebuilding together Thurston County. At its initial level of funding in 1982 of $322,000, adjusted for inflation, an equal grant in 2023 would be over $1 million. The program year 2023 allocation for the city was $362,000. This graph shows the city's allocations from 1982 to 2023. Olympia's allocation rose steadily from 1998 to 2003, peaking at $482,000. This funding is critical for housing preservation in our community. Since 1995, Olympia has invested nearly $6.5 million of CDBG funding to housing activities. 614 units have been rehabilitated or acquired in this time. Preservation of existing affordable housing is one of the city's most important strategies for presenting, for preventing homelessness. Dwindling appropriations are a national issue. This graph shows the national CDBG funding history. In 1975, there were 657 allocations with a $12 billion appropriation. In 2020, formula allocations rose to 1,231 entitlement communities, while the funding budget for the program decreased to only $3.6 billion. Alongside the National Community Development Association, the City of Olympia respectfully requests Congress consideration of an increase in fiscal year 2025 to $4.2 billion. Thank you for the opportunity to share this city's participation in National Community Development Month and to highlight the importance of the CDBG program.
Thank you, Anastasia. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the dais? Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you. Boy, I appreciate the, the report, and I'm just thinking about the variety of supporting efforts downtown to keep things cleaned and, and safe. Efforts to bring sewers to manufactured housing communities that were otherwise going to shut down. We just, we've been able to use this fund in a lot of, even though it's limited, in a lot of really strategic ways to keep people housed and to keep people safe. So I'm, I'm excited about that, and I'm, I'm glad that you had the tour. I'm wondering if we have done a formal letter on the city letterhead asking for a response from our congressional delegation.
I can go ahead and take that if you'd like. Yes, so yes, we did send letters to the offices of both senators, Cantwell and Murray, and also to Congresswoman Strickland. We sent them digitally, and we also presented Congresswoman Strickland with a physical copy during the tour as well. So yes, we have asked them to look at the president's budget, which does cut the CDBG program, I believe, by $400 million next year. And so obviously, that, that's something we would not want to happen. So especially on the, given that it's the 50th anniversary, it's just ironic.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you very much Anastasia.
Thank you so much.
All right, so we will move on to public comment. We do have a few people signed up here in chambers this evening, and we have one person signed up remotely as well. We will begin with those who are here, present in the chambers this evening. So if this is your first time speaking at public comment, it looks like we do have someone, so there is a clock to my right, your left here on the wall, that indicates you have two minutes for your comments. You will notice that there is a box up there with red, yellow, and green lights on them. Green light, a green light means your comments have begun. A, the yellow light means you have about 30 seconds remaining in your comments, and the red light means that your time has expired. If you do not finish your comments, feel free to email them to us as well. And I do just want to mention that we are now in an election year, and I just want to remind everyone that you cannot speak for or against, or declare your candidacy, or refer to it in any manner during public comment in an official business meeting. And so we please that you, ask that you please refrain from doing so. So we will begin, it looks like I have Joanne Malane, and please forgive me if I'm mispronouncing your name. Joanne here? Okay, we will come back. RJ Hershey? Followed by John Pettit, so if you want to prepare yourself, please do so. Mr. Hershey.
Hello, my name is Robert J. Hershey. I'm a member of Olympia Post 318, the Veterans of Foreign Wars. And I must say that I've grown concerned recently over the problem of homeless people coming around and creating a disturbance at our post. And I wish there were some way that especially at about 21:00 hours at night, that we would have a, a policeman would come around to ensure that our bartenders could get home safely. By the way, as an aside, I was born here in town. I love Olympia. When I was a kid, there was one black person in town because the entire county was redlined. I'm happy to see that we now have a mayor who is black. And I've lived through the first female mayor of town. Her name was Amanda Smith, and I've lived through, that's it. Thank you.
Now, you have about 20 seconds remaining, if you would like to finish.
I've lived through two female governors. Now we need a black male or female governor. That's what we need.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hershey. John Pettit, followed by Mindy Ruley, or Rule?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's John Pettit. I don't actually live in town, but I do have property here in town. And I am speaking actually as a level of appreciation. Some different issues that we've, many of us have already known about in the past. I've had some direct interaction, and I want to say that discussion has started, and, and I feel extremely comfortable working with some staff that you have right over here. They've been excellent, professional in every fashion. And some people know I work a lot with the county, and, you know, it's nice to see that you have such professionals here. It's, it's almost comfortable, it's almost like worth coming here just to enjoy their company because they, they communicate well and everything, and their yeses are yes and their noes are no. And, you know, as far as a secondary note, once again, we live in a, a, well, you have a city and, you know, lots of challenges going out to everyone. It's a regional thing. You know, I, I grew up quite a ways away, and where did, if I go anywhere, where do you think I tell people I live? You think I say, "Oh, I live in Thurston County out in the sticks"? No, I, I say, "I live in Olympia. This is the identifiable location." And I, I think you're in better hands now than I've seen in a number of time, and once again, a special appreciation to your quality and professional staff that you have here. You're, you're, you're cutting the, cutting the mustard just perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mindy Ruley, followed by Crystal Beeler.
Good evening, my name's Mindy Ruley. I'm the president and CEO of the Community Foundation of South Puget Sound. The Community Foundation's mission is to grow a culture of generosity and well-being in the South Puget Sound, including the City of Olympia, where I live, through investment, leadership, and collaboration. So essentially, we manage, steward, and mobilize charitable dollars for this place. And I'm here today also to express appreciation and gratitude to the City of Olympia for sponsoring our community conversation event. So it's our first one of its kind, you have a flyer on your, on the dais. This year, we wanted to pick a theme that would resonate with a very broad section of our community, and it's also an election year, and we wanted to acknowledge the realities of increased polarization locally and nationally. So we're bringing in Monica Guzman, author of the book, "I Never Thought of It That Way: How to Have Fearlessly Curious Conversations in Dangerously Divided Times." She'll talk about her book and how all of us can engage in curious conversations across differences. It's, the details are there, but it's at the Washington Center of the Performing Arts on May 22nd and 7:00 PM. And as elected officials, specifically, you all navigate a landscape of differences and complex issues and disagreement. So I'd like to thank you for your service and specifically invite you all to attend and say once again, thanks to the, to the city for supporting this event. The Community Foundation is hosting the event because we believe inclusive civic engagement and productive dialogue across difference is vital to the health and long-term well-being of our community. And I think we, most of us have the well-being of our community in mind, even if we disagree. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mindy. Crystal Beeler?
Hello, my name is Crystal Beeler, came in last week. Still have the same issues with the VFW and the homelessness that we are having. I do appreciate the quick response back from the city council. I have gotten emails, I've gotten phone calls, but we're still having the issue. To prove a point, I went every day and did a police call of, of our parking lot for the last three days. Saturday, I picked up seven needles and 18 packs of tinfoil. On Sunday, I don't know if, because I was there maybe a little bit earlier, we were lucky enough to only have three needles and seven packets of tinfoil. But I went back through again yesterday afternoon before my knitting, and I found seven more needles and another 18 packets of tinfoil. And it wasn't from a burrito or anything, we all know what the tinfoil is for. There was a fire up on the hill and the private property behind us, and we called 911, asked for the fire department to come and put it out because there is no structures or anything of the sort up there. The gentleman that owns that property behind us, it doesn't even live in our, in our state. He's not there. But we were told it was a controlled burn, so they couldn't do anything about it. What's going to happen when that fire goes down the hill and burns down our building? Our patrons have one place to go, where they feel safe. And it's unfortunate thing that this has been happening, and I do appreciate you guys, like I said, getting right on, getting in contact with us so we can get together and discuss this, but please drive down Martin Way. There's a tent set up across the street at Esteka. That, that tent has been sitting there for four days already with stakes, it's staked down. Like where, where?
Thank you very much. Before we move on to our remote list, I do just want to mention that typically, public comment is not a two-way dialogue, but if you just sit tight, there may be some comments or questions from council at the conclusion. I do want to go back to our very first person on the list, Joanne. I'm not sure if she's here in chambers. Oh, okay, that, that's helpful. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so then we will move on to our remote public commenter, Cory Jalseth.
Cory's traveling.
Thank you.
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you again this, this week. Once again, my name is Cory Jalseth, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Rental Housing Association of Washington with regards to the proposed rental ordinance. Unfortunately, all the policies in this ordinance will harm small housing providers in the City of Olympia who provide much of the affordable housing in the community. Still, the most concerning provision is the ability for a resident to break a lease with 30 days' notice for any rent increase over 5%. This will destabilize term-based leases and create uncertainty for housing providers in the City of Olympia. A lease is a mutually agreed-upon contract, and this policy effectively nullifies any type of lease agreement. Destabilizing this process will harm housing providers and residents as it will remove consistency from term-based lease provisions and will cause housing providers to set initial rents higher. The relocation assistance penalties could also cause great hardship for small housing providers who generally offer rents already well below market rate. The relocation assistance possibility will reduce housing providers' ability to properly maintain their properties and make needed upgrades or repairs as they will retain money for a possible payout to tenants. Not tying this assistance to AMI may also lead to abuse of this policy. $10 is an incredibly low late fee. Housing providers don't want to collect late payments. They want a good relationship with a tenant who pays rent on time, and the late fee needs to be high enough to ensure compliance with the rent due date. Please stand up for small business in your city. Increasing regulation on small rental housing providers statewide continues to drive us out of the market, which worsens the rental housing shortage and increases rental housing prices. The Rental Housing Association remains ready and willing to discuss alternative measures that have proven to make housing more affordable, such as assistance programs. We appreciate the time and effort of the council members who discuss these provisions with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that concludes public comment for this evening. Any comments from council? Councilmember Partially.
It's more of a question. When the representatives from the VFW came, they asked for potentially a neighborhood meeting with Unity Commons. Have we made any, are we looking at that? And I'm saying, I'm seeing a head shaking, yes, thank you, because I hear you, and I know that we had these before the Unity Common even began, and I think maybe it's time to convene them again. Do you have?
Yes, good evening, Councilmember Partially, Mayor Payne, council. For the record, Rich Hoy, Assistant City Manager. Yesterday, Darian Lightfoot, our Director of Housing and Homeless Response, spoke to Commander Beeler. Susan Grisham has also reached out about scheduling a community meeting that would involve Councilmember Cooper and Mayor Payne and key staff at the city. So we're very interested in working with the, with the post on the challenges they're facing. We're having our homeless response team, you know, spend more time out in this area. We're also working with our police department to do some more emphasis in this area, but we're following up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any? Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the VFW folks for coming again and just keeping this on our radar. It's really important that we know the impacts out there in the community, so just thanks for being here. And also, John, nice to see you. It's also nice to hear praise from you. And Mindy, nice to see you as well. I look forward to, to this event, and thanks for your work at the Community Foundation.
All right, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne, and thank you to the VFW for keeping this in front of us, and hopefully we can get some solutions. It's, you know, anytime we get a hotspot, if you will, in the community, it takes us a little while to rally around it because there's so many, and it's really tough, but we do appreciate you and understand. And actually, I drove by at lunchtime today, and I thought, boy, that parking lot looks clean, but now I know why. So you're doing a good job keeping it up in, in, in light of the situation that you're, you're bearing with. And thank you to the Community Foundation. I got the postcard in the mail and thought, boy, what an important conversation. How do we get everyone there? Because that's the conversation that we all need to have, whether it's with our neighbors or with our family sometimes. So, thank you, thank you. And I think there's excellent employees at the county.
His wife.
Any additional questions from council? All right, yes. Yeah, I also just want to thank the VFW for coming this evening again and highlighting this for us. It's, it's something that I understand it can be very frustrating, and we just appreciate your patience while we address it. As Councilmember Cooper said, you know, some of the hotspots are frankly, we may not even know about them unless community members come to us and, and point them out, because as we address some of the encampments that we have around the city and things of that nature, we do tend to see that there are certain areas where we didn't see people before, and suddenly, you know, they're there. And so we just appreciate your patience while we try to address that, as well as, I want to thank city staff for being on top of it with getting back to you, and very much looking forward to our meeting to work with you on a solution to address the problems you're experiencing, and, and thank you for your response as well. So, all right, well, with that, that concludes our section of public comment for this evening, and we will move on to the adoption of the consent calendar. I am tracking one poll before we adopt the consent calendar, which is 4D, an approval of updates to the City of Olympia's investment policy, which was, this poll was requested by Councilmember Partially. And my understanding is we have city staff here, Kenzie Wong, Accounting Manager and Finance, to speak to this item.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kenzie Wong, I'm the Accounting Manager, the General Accounting Manager here at the city. I'm the Accounting Manager, the General Accounting Manager here at the city. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Payne and councilmembers, for this opportunity to speak a little bit more, just give a little more context about the investment policy. We did update it to more closely align with state law, as well as the state treasurer's limits on different types of investments. We presented it to Finance Committee back in February, and then subsequently, we did submit it to the Washington Public Treasurers Associations for review, and they have an investment policy program. So what they do is they have a committee, and they use a 23-point rubric to determine whether that policy is, meets their really rigorous standards. So we did submit it to them, and they decided that our policy did, so we were awarded that Just a little bit of context, they let us know that out of 281 cities in the state of Washington, there are 12 who have been awarded that certification. So we are happy to be one of them and have that distinguishment. Yeah, if there's any questions?
Thank you very much, Kenzie. Any questions or comments from the dais? Councilmember Partially.
I wanted to pull this because sometimes finance doesn't get the accolades it should to be one of, what, 12 out of 200 and something cities to pass this? And we were kind of warned this might not go through because it's pretty rigorous, so I just wanted to applaud you and the Finance Department.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Partially.
Thank you very much. All right, so we will also be pulling Item 4G for separate action this evening, which is the approval of an ordinance amending the Olympia's municipal code related to relocation assistance and additional renter protections. So I need a motion to adopt the consent calendar minus Item 4G.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda minus Item 4G signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. All right, so we will move on to the adoption of Item 4G, which I just mentioned is the approval of the change to the code related to relocation assistance and additional renter protections. And so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, thanks for pulling this. You know, in our conversation last week, as we were, you know, working through some of the details, we had been seeking like a broad and inclusion, inclusive definition of family for the exemption of the Rental Housing Registry. And since then, we've received some feedback on the definition that we landed on last week, and that is by identifying family members by blood and adoption separately, we actually inadvertently perpetuate some stigma for those who are adopted, who are full members of their family. So I've worked with staff to refine the definition a little bit and still achieve that same inclusive outcome and avoiding that issue. And so the definition, I'd like to propose an amendment that we change the definition of immediate family member to mean a spouse, domestic partner, or partner in a committed intimate relationship, or a parent, grandparent, child, grandchild, sibling, aunt, uncle, niece, or nephew, including when related by law, such as through marriage, domestic partnership, or committed intimate relationship. Our staff feel really confident that this includes all the people that we'd like to include, and if they're, I'll take a beat for any questions or just if anybody wanted to say anything.
Councilmember Partially.
I just want to applaud Councilmember Madron. Having two adopted nieces, we never say adopted in front of that. We say child, niece. So thank you, I appreciate you taking this on.
Great. Well, I'll move to approve on second reading the ordinance amending OMC 5.82 related to relocation assistance and additional renter protections with the amended definition of immediate family member.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Madron. Councilmember Gilman.
I just wanted to ask, I see that Krista Lenson's here, and she helped clarify to me today, I had a couple people reach out asking, well, when does this go into effect? And I'm wondering, could you just briefly describe how?
I can say it real quick. It's 30 days from today, because we just passed it on second reading.
So I understood it's 30 days from publication, whatever publication means, which is approximately 30. Here's our city attorney to clarify.
Now I'm looking at Mark Barber.
Generally, I encourage that we use language 30 days after passage and publication. We're required to publish. That's now done in the Olympian, and has been done for many years, both in newsprint as well as digitally. So that's the safest way, 30 days from passage and publication.
Thank you very much, Mark, and thank you for flagging that, Councilmember Gilman. And I also just want to say, as an adoptive parent, I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the consideration from my colleagues here on council, and also from city staff who caught that, and also just recognizing whether we should include it or not include it. Either way, we were considered and thought carefully during our deliberations specifically on that definition, so I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to our official business items for this evening, beginning with Item 6A, which is approval of the Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Concept Design, which will be presented to us by Stephanie Johnson, our Arts Commission Staff Liaison, who will be introducing our artists this evening. Stephanie?
Super. Thank you, Mayor Payne and members of council. I'm Stephanie Johnson, Arts Program and Planning Supervisor with Parks Arts and Recreation. I'm here today with Abe Singer, project artist for the Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Project. I was last here for this project in January when you approved Abe as project artist, and since then, he has toured the park probably more than once, met with city staff to review Grass Lake construction process and documents, and met with students from Marshall Middle School's Citizen Science Program to learn about the nature of the park, to help inform his design for architecture, or, sorry, for sculpture, architectural sculpture. Should you approve Abe's concept design this evening, the next step would be to return to the Arts Commission in May, for Abe to return to the Arts Commission in May with final design details, and then move forward into fabrication.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and city council members. I'm Abe Singer, project artist for the Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Project, and I'm here to share my ideas, oh, I'm doing the slide right, for the Grass Lake Nature Park Call for Art, which consists of a bird blind and two entryway sculptures. So this project is to be fabricated from this big old guy right here. Anyone familiar with Grass Lake Nature Park will recognize this water tank. It's kind of an iconic piece of the park's history. So instead of sending it to the scrapyard, it was decided to repurpose it as art in the park. So I have both this wonderful opportunity to take advantage of those elegant curves and domes, and also these very strict parameters that I have to stay within. Because the majority of the heavy metal shaping has been done already, I have to design the artwork in response to the material, to utilize the available geometry, which is the opposite of a typical fabrication process, and it makes it a fun challenge, like a puzzle. In addition to the parameters of the materials, I also need to consider the project goals that were listed in this Call for Art. The bird blind and the two place marking elements will help to define the identity of the park, and welcome guests in, and set the tone for their visit. There's definitely a vibe to this part, and I'm hoping that these three pieces will foster that and flow with it. And here I am, meeting with Mr. Condon and the CSI students, that's Citizen Science Institute students. This was another interesting parameter to the design process, including the input from the community, represented by these students who clearly care about this place, and have invested a lot of their own time and hard work into it. So it was important to take, to make sure that their input was given consideration. The students were passionate and invested. They had a strong knowledge of the park and its diverse ecosystem. They focused on restoration, watershed improvement, tree planting, and preserving and fostering wildlife. There was a general consensus about using subtle, earthy tones in the park, and a desire to capture the sentiment of the park, what it was, what it is, and what they hope it will be. So how does that all fit in with my themes as an artist? So it's important for me, for my art, to be welcoming. I like to elevate natural elements that are typically overlooked, and integrate the viewer with my art by playing with perspective, moving the viewer's point of view to the ground level, where they can look up with a new appreciation for the little things. Felix Pugh was an alumni of the CSI program, and he's a senior now in high school. He was on the selection committee that selected me as the artist, and he told a story about visiting the park with his dad when he was little, and feeling really uncomfortable there, like it was in really rough shape, and maybe even a little scary. And that story really, really resonated with the group, and it validated the kids and Mr. Condon's hard work with the restoration efforts, and it showed how far they've come. So we talked about that idea of regeneration and restoration, and how to tell that story of this place that's transformed into something the community really cares about. One of the ideas that came up was the idea of a nurse log, with its nutrients being consumed by mushrooms and insects and all the little decomposers, and being recycled to feed the next generation of life. I thought about some different ways to build a literal nurse log, but the tank is the nurse log, and it's being broken down and consumed to help build the next step in breathing new life into the park. Fungi, as decomposers, they help return energy to the earth. Mushrooms slowly break down the tree into a new generation of soil. The tree is returned to the soil from which it came. Recycling the water tank mirrors the process of recycling nutrients. Which brings us to my design concept for the two entryway sculptures. I wanted to showcase the existing curvature of the tank, and take advantage of the large industrial machine tools it took to press the end caps into their dome-shaped, and roll the sides of the tank to round. This mockup shows the approximate size of the piece. Here, I'm holding a piece of metal cut from the side of the tank to show how the curvature of the tank will be used to create the curves of the sculpture. The gills also come from the side of the tank, so they're curved as well, which creates this effect of motion or energy flowing up from the ground through the stems and radiating Where maximum curve is desired, the segment will be cut with its length at 90 degrees from parallel to the length of the tank. Where no curve is needed, the segment will be cut with its length parallel to the tank, and everything in between. The structural welding will be done where the stem is joined to the cap, and where the base of the stem joins the root portion extending into the concrete. The welds joining the segments of the stem aren't structural, so they could be joined using stainless steel for curved white lines flowing up the length of the stem, adding realism, visual interest, and highlighting the fluid sweeping curvature. So the specs and materials for this, it'll be approximately, oh, got it. It's approximately six feet tall, seven feet wide, and the weight is going to depend on the actual thickness of the tank material and whatever internal engineered support bracing I end up using. The root portion of the sculpture extends into a concrete sonotube here, approximately 24 inches wide and 48 inches deep. Again, the actual size to be determined by engineering calculations based on weight and wind shear. The materials are mostly the mild steel reclaimed from the water tank provided, and any incidental mild steel supports and bracing. For this project, that will likely be a section of steel pipe that's going to be welded to the underside of the cap, and that will extend through the stem into the concrete below. The structural welding will be done with E71T electrodes using the Dual Shield Flux Core Arc Welding Process, and the decorative stainless steel highlights will be welded with E309 electrodes, which is what's recommended for joining stainless to mild steel, also using the Dual Shield Flux Core Arc Welding Process. And, I'll show you this. This is my angle calculator. This would represent a circle that's been cut from the side of the tank. It's cut from a 10-inch piece of sonotube to represent the 10-foot-tall water tank, and you can see how I can find the angles. That's how I determine how to lay the pattern to create the curves I need from what I have. So my family and I enjoyed a hike at the park a few weeks ago, and my kids were excited to discover and photograph these little frogs while we were there, and that inspired my concept for the bird blind. I wanted to continue that theme of using perspective to shrink the viewer to the point of view of a tiny creature hidden in the forest floor, frog's eye view. This S-curve panel is made from two half-round portions of the tank side. Kicking it a few degrees from 90 makes the mushrooms on the left lean back, and the fern fiddlehead on the right lean forward, creating a whimsical fish-eye lens effect, and it strengthens the concept of the frog's eye view. It also creates the effect that the material is lightweight and flexible, as if fluttering Areas that show a single thin line joining two panel sections together, such as the portion of the fiddlehead fern in the upper right-hand corner, and the foot of the snail crossing the stem, here, and here, and here, and here, can be achieved either with a heavy steel rod, or by cutting a strip from the side of the tank and turning it sideways, so only the thin profile of its edge is visible. The gridwork of the dragonfly's wings will be made of thin stainless rods. There are going to be some challenges with safety code compliance dealing with a piece that features negative space as its main feature. For example, the tips of the fiddleheads couldn't taper down to a point like that for finger entrapment, and the larger mushroom stem, looks like it'll exceed the allowable 3 1/4 for head entrapment. But this is just a concept drawing, and Stephanie has informed me that we will have access to a certified playground inspector who can review my technical plans and point out anything I missed. This little character shows the approximate scale of the piece, and then the overhead view shows that S-curve shape. And here it is, in the park, by the water, the magic of technology. So the specs and materials for the bird blind, it's two 6-foot-long, half-round sections from the body of the tank, one section inverted, and the two sections welded together to create that. one section inverted, and the two sections welded together to create that 6-foot-by-10-foot S-curve panel. The viewing windows are achieved through the decorative cutouts. The S-shaped footprint creates a stable base, and it'll be connected to the boardwalk structural members with mounting brackets welded to the backside with E71T electrodes using the dual-shield flux core arc welding process. And the materials will mostly be the mild steel reclaimed from the water tank and any incidental mild steel supports, bracing, brackets, mounting hardware. And the structural welding, you guessed it, welding with E71T electrodes using, say it with me, the dual-shield flux core arc welding process. And the decorative stainless steel highlights will be welded with E309 electrodes using the dual-shield flux core arc welding process, which I'm certified in, that's why I'm using that. Maintenance, I'm recommending gentle cleaning with mild soapy water and a soft brush or sponge as needed. Graffiti can be removed with a citrus-based commercial graffiti removal product, such as Graffiti Off. And every other year, a reapplication of Oatrol Rust Inhibiting Oil, or as needed locally after graffiti removal. Thank you for your time. Cheers. I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh. My slide.
Thank you very much, Mr. Singer. Very, very talented. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the deists? All right, well, I Okay, well, I'll just say, you know, first of all, I learned something new when this project first came to the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee. I actually had never even heard of a bird blind. I didn't know what that was. And now that I know what it is, I can't wait to see it. And I do have a question about timeline of the project of, when do we think this will be complete?
So the bird blind is connected to the decking over the water, and so that will be delivered first in September so that the construction crew on the park redevelopment can actually attach the pieces together. And then the mushrooms are in a different foundation system at the ends of the park on Harrison and Kaiser, and so they will be done later just to give Abe a little bit of a break because it's a really tight timeline, which I think we announced when we talked about it last year, so. But he's really game, which we're really, really pleased with. So yeah, so it'll be a slow rollout for this one.
Thank you, Stephanie. Councilmember Partially.
Stephanie answered a couple of mine, which is, you know, I have to admit my ignorance of not being to Grass Lake. Where these pieces are going to be in the park? So you said the two entrance ones are Kaiser and?
Kaiser and Harrison.
And then where's the duck blind going?
I'm looking at Paul. I think it's Kaiser and Harrison. And then the blind is almost in the middle of the park. So there's Kaiser and Harrison are the entrances, which are a paved trail, because right now it's a dirt trail and it's hard for everybody to go enjoy Grass Lake. So it's an impervious trail. And then the overwater, as I understand, is a boardwalk. And then there's a parking lot near there. So actually, one of the lanterns is by the parking lot. I keep calling them lanterns, but they're sort of, we kind of, as entryway, did you talk about lanterns? The thing I really love about these two, if I may, for just a second, it's really a parking lot and a trailhead. There's no bathroom, there's no place to escape the rain except for this really wonderful mushroom. So there's one by the parking lot, and then there's one by the pedestrian and bicycle-only entrance. So they kind of announce that you have arrived.
Is there going to be a kiosk at any point in anywhere in the park explaining? Because what he just went through was great.
There is a kiosk with information. I know that Sarah Jean Noble is working on it, so I'll see if we can, the mathematics are pretty amazing, aren't they? So I'll see if we can add something. It might be full up already, but there's always QR codes, so we can do that.
All right, well, thank you very much, and thank you for the explanation. I do not like mushrooms of any kind, but I appreciate the reminder that everything has a purpose. Councilmember Gilman.
Well, so long as this is going to be fabricated with flux core arc welding, I'd like to make a motion. I would move to approve the Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Concept Design as presented. The artists will work on final details to present to the Arts Commission for final approval on May 9th.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to item 6B, which is a parking strategy brief. And here to present this evening is Chelsea Baker-Vandadrude, who is the Parking Services Program Specialist in our Community Planning and Development Department here at the city. Hey, Chelsea.
Hello. Let me hit the tall button for a second there.
I'm looking forward to this one. I remember I ran into you. Yeah, you promised cartoons, so I'm looking forward to it.
I will deliver on that for sure. All right. This is my first council presentation. Wow. So I am here. I'm Chelsea Baker-Vandadrude. I'm the City of Olympia Parking Services Program Specialist. And I'm here because you folks asked me to be here. Most of you were not on the council when the parking services, or the parking strategy was passed in 2019. So I'm here just to give you a little briefing and let you know what's up with that. So you want to learn about parking. Parking is not always a very popular item. Charging money for parking, you know, enforcing time limits and writing tickets are all very unpopular items lots of times. So why do we do it? Wouldn't it just be easier, simpler, and better to just have free parking for as long as you want, no tickets, nothing? Well, quite frankly, we've tried that before. And that's about how it went. Unfortunately, this is not a photo of Olympia. I searched everywhere. I couldn't find anything. But that is Detroit in 1915. And in 1915, that year that that photo was taken, there were 2.3 million cars registered in the United States, which sounds like a lot, until you look at the numbers that they anticipate for this year, which is 296.6 million. So it is a significant increase in car ownership since that was taken. That doesn't bode well. Quite frankly, everyone wants to have a parking spot right in front of their destination. We all want that rock star parking spot. But sometimes, there are more destinations than there are parking spots. So what do you do? How do you handle that? One solution is simple, right? Add more streets. Let's just, you know, knock down a bunch of buildings downtown and make sure there are no destinations to go to to begin with. Maybe that's not the best idea. So instead, what the transportation industry considers its golden rule for parking is we aim for an 85% occupancy rate and no more. A maximum of an 85% occupancy rate equates in this town to about one open parking spot per block face, which means that anyone coming downtown can find that rock star parking spot. They can park at least within close proximity to the business or, you know, whatever thing they're going to, without having to drive around in circles, burning unnecessary fossil fuels, wasting their time, you know, frustrating them. And frankly, for folks who have mobility issues, if there's no available parking, there is no accessible parking. So this is a really important point for folks who really genuinely need to be very close to their destination. But getting that 85% occupancy rate is a lot harder than it looks. So for example, let's take this block. This is one of the blocks in our downtown. It houses Captain Little Toy Store, Radiance Herbs and Massage, several apartment buildings, you know, coffee shops, restaurants, all sorts of stuff. So this block is one of our busiest blocks in town, and it has 29 parking stalls all the way around all four sides. That one block is home to 22 businesses and 107 apartment units. So if you figure that every business only has one employee at a time who's driving into work that day, and every apartment only has one car, no matter how many people live in that apartment, and you assume that every business only has one customer who drove down to visit them at any given point in time, that's 151 cars for 29 spaces, which equates to more than five cars per stall. So what do we do with that? How do we manage that? So the parking strategy is here to help guide us, and it provides recommendations and best practices for how we can keep that occupancy rate down below that 85% mark. The parking strategy, as I stated, was passed by some of you, your cohorts at least, in 2019. And the parking strategy is not alone. It was a project that came out of the Olympia Downtown Strategy. They specifically wanted to have a parking strategy to lay out how we make sure that downtown remains accessible to folks who want to come down and participate in, you know, businesses and cultural activities and events. The parking strategy also ties in with our master transportation strategy, which is continually being updated. I think the last version was passed, I believe, in 2021. The transportation strategy ensures that all of our roads move smoothly so that, you know, like that photo I showed you before, that we won't have cars parking in the middle of the street and blocking the roads, or parking in bike lanes, parking in yellow zones that are too close to corners and affect, you know, sightlines and prevent people from seeing, you know, oncoming traffic or pedestrians or bicyclists. The parking strategy ties into the city's economic goals for making sure that downtown businesses stay vibrant and stay open and, you know, continue to make money for, you know, the folks who work there. And it also ties in with our homelessness strategy, our one community plan, because in a lot of places, the cost of parking your car, like, you know, if you have a garage or if you live in an apartment that provides a parking stall for you, a lot of times those parking costs are roped into your rent or your mortgage, which actually increases the cost of housing. But that's bad news if you don't own a car. That means you're paying unnecessary money for a thing you're not even using. And a lot of folks who don't own cars don't own them because they can't afford them. So it's oftentimes the folks in our community who need, you know, need money the most who are unnecessarily paying money for services they're not even using. So making sure that drivers actually pay for the services they're receiving as opposed to the entire community is good for, you know, low-income folks. It also definitely ties into Thurston County's climate change plans because one of the goals of the parking strategy is to reduce the amount of miles traveled in a car. You know, travel demand management is a really big thing right now. Trying to minimize how much folks are driving, trying, encourage other methods of transportation, which is something our parking strategy definitely does. So the parking strategy, this is one of my predecessor's slides, and it was too good for me to miss. The only slide I didn't draw myself. So we design and implement parking management programs so that people have access to predictable short and long-term parking so that downtown Olympia is a vibrant, attractive urban destination so that Olympia has a stable and thriving economy. So this kind of encompasses the goals of the parking strategy. So let's talk about what's actually in the strategy itself. So it lays out seven points that we want to work on, as well as a few tips and tricks for how we should get there. So we're going to update parking management tools, which includes improving our data collection, implementing a license plate reader, license plate reading technology, updating our enforcement software, and implementing a mobile payment option. So on a bunch of these slides, you'll see these green and yellow checkmarks. So the green checkmarks are things that we have already done, we have completed, we can like dust off our hands and walk away on those. The yellow checkmarks are ones that we have begun the process of, but we're still working on. So next it calls for us to improve our on-street parking. So we're going to raise or lower prices so that we can maintain that 85% occupancy rate. We're going to expand the three-hour parking in downtown. We're going to implement evening and weekend enforcement, which is very important because, so we do quarterly occupancy counts through downtown, and that's how we can tell whether or not we're meeting our 85% goals. The last time we did an occupancy count, the Friday night at 7:00 PM count was 106% occupancy. Yes, indeed. How does that happen? That means that, like I said, there's a lot of folks who are parked too close to crosswalks and stop signs, making it difficult for traffic to see around them, which is a very big hazard. That also makes it difficult for emergency vehicles to make turns. So, you know, think the really long fire trucks with the big ladders and things. In case of an emergency, that makes it a lot more difficult for them to round corners. People parked blocking alleys. People parked on sidewalks. I have seen that late at night. Just all sorts of stuff, you know, parking in load zones for extended periods of time. So that's how you get that 108% occupancy, which is not a good thing. And then the last thing for improving on-street parking is we're going to take a look at the free 15 minutes that we currently give folks, as well as the complimentary holiday parking, to see if those services are actually doing downtown a disservice by making it harder to reach those occupancy goals. We're going to reinvigorate off-street parking by implementing more EV chargers, because that's going to be a real big thing pretty soon here. They're becoming more and more, you know, needed. We're going to reduce parking minimums, install more wayfinding signage to make the off-street parking a lot easier to find for the general public. And we're also going to do public-private partnerships because a lot of the downtown surface lots are privately owned. So the city, you know, us ourselves, we don't have a lot of control over, you know, who parks there or what goes on. But we can start having conversations with the owners of those lots and say, hey, do you want to open it up to the public? And, you know, maybe make a little extra cash, and everybody's happy, and it pulls more cars off the street parking, which then opens that up for customers and folks who might need it. We're going to improve access to downtown. So this means adding more bike infrastructure, like Kristin Gilkerson was talking about earlier in the meeting, you know, with the downtown bike corridor and all the work that they're doing to try and encourage more biking in this town. We're going to make pedestrian improvements, making it easier, safer, more comfortable for folks to walk through and into downtown. We're going to increase transit frequency because that's one barrier for a lot of folks who don't want to leave their cars. It's like, well, you know, the bus doesn't come often enough. So increasing that frequency is a big deal. The strategy says we're going to give away free bus passes and that we're going to make ADA improvements, which that ties into a lot of the pedestrian improvements. I'm really happy about the big green checkmark next to the free bus passes because like I said, the parking strategy was passed in April of 2019, and just eight months later, January of 2020, inner-city transit went entirely fare-free. So we didn't actually have to do anything there. It's like our parking strategy wanted us to give out free bus passes to downtown employees, and now we don't even have to do that program. So thanks, IT. We're going to support residential and employee parking by incentivizing off-street options. options, educating downtown employees on how to park, where to park, and why that's important, and increasing permit prices to hopefully encourage more folks to do less driving and more walking, biking, busing. Um, we're going to support culture and entertainment uses. Um, again, shared use, so partnering with private lot owners, um, to allow them to use, you know, allow the public to use their lots, maybe during hours when they don't need it, like, um, the banks that are kind of in the vicinity of the Washington Center. They have very different hours of operation, so why not have Washington Center patrons park there, you know, that kind of a thing, um, as well as shared-use A D. A. stalls. And then lastly, it calls for us to improve disabled parking management, which means updating our parking lots for A D. A. compliance, uh, reducing placard misuse. So this involves us mostly talking to, you know, the state and lobbying for laws that make it a lot harder for folks to misuse or abuse, uh, A D. A. placards. Um, we're going to implement a four-hour time limit for A D. A. stalls in the core of downtown, which is another one that we've already done. And we're going to add, uh, more access in high-demand areas for folks with A D. A. placards and parking needs. So that is my presentation. Do you have any questions?
That deserves a round of applause.
Thank you.
For being your first presentation, you set the bar for yourself a little high, so...
Yeah, right?
Good.
Any questions from today? It's Councilmember Parsley.
Actually, I think, you know, your presentation itself with the artwork set it high for everybody else.
I like to doodle, what can I say?
Oh, no, I, you did one of our retreats, and you were keeping up with us as we were talking. It was a beautiful mural, actually. Um, has it been thought about, and I speak as a daughter of a person who had trouble, she had a disability, um, of some of our paid parking meters becoming purely A D. A. so that you can get close enough on some of the blocks facing, you know, restaurants, the Washington Center, so we don't have to go in the off-street if there isn't anything available?
Uh, so one of the difficulties with that is that according to state law, any, uh, any parking spot that is signed as being only for A D. A. parking, uh, cannot have a time limit, and there's enough folks who work or live downtown that those spots would just be dominated by usually, like, probably just like one or two people, and as soon as one person moves out after parking there for who knows how long, somebody else would dominate it. Um, because the reason that, uh, the Parking Strategy called for that four-hour time limit was that, um, our enforcement folks were literally seeing cars that had A D. A. placards downtown, before there was a, an enforceable time limit, that had moss drip lines around them, because they would go months without moving.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that. I hadn't even thought about that. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Yeah, the bar is pretty high. I look forward to see what you bring to the Land Use Committee. Uh, I just wanted to note that you, you match your artwork right there.
I knew what I was going to wear.
Um, I have a couple of questions, too, one of those being the question that, um, Councilmember Parsley just asked, because since this, since we implemented the four-hour, uh, parking, you know, we've heard from, you know, residents downtown who, you know, that it doesn't work so well for them, and it just seems like it's one of those, just really kind of a challenging situation where we just, you know, it, it sounds, it sounds like it's difficult to, um, wrestle with. Um, and I'd be curious, um, this isn't something you need to address now, but like, I'm curious how other cities have gone about trying to find a balance on that. I, I know that there's the state law that says that we can implement that four-hour parking if they're all, if, if, you know, for as long as it's not those dedicated spots, but, um, but I am wondering, like, what other cities have done to try to find that balance?
Yeah, um, I can look into that for you. Um, I know that one of the blocks, the, the block I showed you earlier, um, actually, um, one of the solutions that we came to was putting in a fifteen-minute passenger loading zone there, so that, you know, it, it's not marked as only A D. A., so anyone from the public can use it, but there's a fifteen-minute limit, so it's, you know, you pull in, you get your groceries out, you drive off, you find another parking spot or whatever.
Okay, yeah, yeah, well, I, I just begin, just because it's come up, like, several times, um, since we've implemented...
I'm aware.
I know, I know you are. We are, too. So like, when we have people coming to pub, talking to us about it, like, you know, it's like, oh, you know, and, and just, just, and just to, you know, do, do a little bit of digging and then just let us know if there are, if, if there's something else we should be considering, um, or if, you know, maybe, maybe it's just the best that we can do, given the situation.
Yeah.
Um, I'm also, you know, I just wanted to note that, uh, transit frequency is on there, but also the hours of transit is also really important.
Yes.
I know there is a, you know, soft campaign in the community to bring back the late-night Evergreen bus. I would like that being a west...
Well, my, my understanding, I don't work for inner-city transit, so I'm not an authority on this, but, um, my understanding is that, uh, they're still kind of crawling out of the COVID hole. They had a lot of drivers who, um, who had to quit, uh, during COVID, and they're still trying to get their driver number back up to what it was pre-COVID, and they actually have, um, uh, a bunch of expanded routes that are getting, you know, implemented, I think on May fifth.
Oh.
Um, and they will be back up at that point to, I want to say it was like ninety percent of their pre-COVID coverage, um, so they're getting there.
Thanks, yeah. I had heard that it was a workforce issue, but it's always good to talk about it, so that as people, you know, listen to us talk about these things, they know why the drunk bus isn't back yet.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, that was the, that was the, uh, the, the community name for that bus line. Um, I also noticed that you said that, that you're still working on mobile payment options, and I mean...
Yes.
I use my, my phone to, to, to pay for parking, so like, what is the part we're still working on?
So the part that we're, that I specifically am still working on, because it falls under my job duties, is, uh, we're working on selecting a vendor for a text-to-pay option, because a lot of folks really don't want to download another app onto their phones. Some people don't know how to use apps or download apps. Um, so a text-to-pay option will be a lot simpler. There'll be a number that they text, and it will, uh, then text back with a link to, you know, usually a website that they can then go to and, you know, register their payment.
Oh, cool. I think that's how Evergreen does it. Um, so, okay. Um, and then, um, just a couple of, like, comments, um, you know, just to, you know, further, you know, share, like, how, like, you know, we've got these policies in place that are, you know, the best we can do for managing parking, but I've also heard from, like, downtown employees that, like, parking at the nine-hour meter and then getting off of work when it's dark out and getting out to their cars, um, can be intimidating for them. Um, I don't know, um, if, I don't know if there's a fix for that, or, or if it...
One of the fixes, uh, that's talked about in the Parking Strategy is that, um, just us having evening and weekend hours will mean more eyes out on the street that are, you know, they're in an official capacity, so that might, you know, ease at least some frustrations. Um, but it also calls for, you know, hey, look at that transportation strategy over there, that's all fancy and shiny, and calls for more lighting and, you know, more walking patrol and other things to, you know, improve public safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is addressed in the Parking Strategy.
Awesome. And I, like, just one final comment. I know last year there was some work done in the community around, like, the potential expanding of hours and days, and my request around, uh, any expansion of hours and days is that, um, is that we keep it predictable day-to-day.
Yeah.
Like, the, the previous proposal had different hours for Monday, different hours Tuesday through Thursday, different hours Friday and Saturday, and, you know, sometimes I don't know what day it is, and like, I don't want to get a ticket, so...
Uh, and that is something that, uh, that we've addressed, and I look forward to talking about it at Land Use with you.
I look forward to the next issue of your, uh, your comic strip here. Thank you.
Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Um, one of the parking things I'm wondering about is, um, we've had, um, efforts over the last several years to work with Washington Center, Harlequin, Capitol Theater, as, um, some of the big state parking lots went away and became new mixed-use buildings, which is wonderful. Um, how, how does the Downtown Strategy address events that are in the downtown core?
Um, I think, to my knowledge, uh, Leonard can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think the Downtown Strategy just calls for, uh, making more of those small lots, you know, shared use, like, you know, like I said, the banks, not necessarily just big state lots, which, like you said, are turning into buildings now. But, uh, a lot of it is also just really genuinely trying to get people out of cars and into other options, um, because, you know, looking at climate change looming off in the not-too-distant future, um, you know, all the climate scientists that I have followed and, you know, that I read about, uh, they say that even if we all switch to electric cars tomorrow, it still wouldn't solve the issue. Um, so we really, really do need to get more people on buses, on bikes, on foot, um, and have communities that are more walkable and transitable.
Good, and I, I guess I would just offer that that's all true, and many of the patrons who come to do the dinner out in the theater come from out in other communities or the suburban fringes and, and come in, so, so whether the city's walkable is sort of irrelevant for that, that business, yeah.
Well, if we can get folks who do live in bus-able, walk-able areas to bus and walk into downtown, that would open up more spaces for those who live farther out in, you know, the boonies who kind of have to drive in, or who have mobility issues and have to drive in.
Right, and, and now that you've made this transition of positions, could you go back to your old self, solving problems with people who are super frustrated about their parking, and just, what is your brief advice to somebody who's intimidated about coming to downtown and parking?
Um, I'd point out that, you know, even if you do come downtown and park, it's pretty cheap, you know? A buck twenty-five an hour at our most expensive meters, that's kind of a small price to pay when you think about it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cooper, followed by Councilmember Vanderpool.
The worst thing about parking downtown are the advertisements in the app. That was an easy answer. Joke aside, I'll come back to that, but, um, I also think we get to give, uh, Councilmember Gilman a pass for being on the wrong team for the commuter challenge, because he helped deliver the fare-free buses, which are helping you not have to do bus passes, so I think that's good.
Thank you for that.
Um, so can you just talk a little bit more about what your plans are around evening and weekend, and you implied maybe on-demand pricing or redu, reduced pricing when there's no demand?
Uh, I think we're still working out some of the kinks in that, um, particularly about the pricing stuff. Um, I know that we laid out what hours we were looking at, um, and I believe it was Monday through Saturday until seven P M., um, Monday through Friday starting at eight, and then Saturday starting at ten.
Okay, great.
So that makes sense.
Great, yeah, and I think, I think that's, that's a smart move, because I definitely have noticed that, like, shift towards evening capacity that's, um, so different than before the pandemic.
Yeah, yeah, our, our occupancy counts show that, you know, pre-pandemic, the busiest time of day to park downtown was the lunch hour, and, you know, post-pandemic, it's that seven o'clock evening count. So it's, it's really interesting to see that change.
Yeah, you just reduced the state employees a little bit, and the whole place came to life. Uh, it's, it's, it's odd. I, I'm not sure, it, it's amazing. It's really cool to see the, the dow, the vibrancy in our downtown in a new way. Um, so the four-hour was, it took me a minute, so I think it's, I'm glad that you're clarifying that that's four hours for people that have the permit.
Yeah, for people with valid invisible handicap placards.
Right, because when I started seeing the sticker with the placard, I was like, well, now I can't park anywhere, they all have the placard, so I, I think that's a good clarification.
And I, next time we re-sticker downtown, I'm going to suggest we redesign those, because a lot of people think that, like, these are all handicap spots, I got nowhere I, that I can park.
Yeah, that's great.
So, yep.
And, and I, and I just, I do like the app, I, I make a joke about it, I think that if, if the government and, and the people are paying to use a service, it shouldn't have advertisements on it, so if there's a way that we could buy our way out of those ads, or maybe you're going to switch platforms, but it is nice to go to other cities and have it be the same app also, so...
Yeah.
I do appreciate that, so thank you so much for the good work.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Vanderpool.
I learned how to park in Washington, D.C., so everything else is just easy after that. I'll just say, everything else is easy. Um, uh, anyway, I, I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate where the Strategy is going. Um, I, uh, read the High Price of, uh, what's it, High Prices?
High Price of Free Parking by Donald Shoup.
Donald Shoup, yeah.
I'm reading it for the second time.
Oh.
All seven hundred pages.
Oh, it's such a comfortable read, right?
Hmm, just curl up in front of a fire.
Yeah, I follow him on Twitter. Um, anyway, um, uh, I'm curious about any interesting ideas that have percolated out of that, that we can try to implement that we haven't thought of doing yet, like, maybe, um, you know, how could we expand the, the cost of parking, because we only do parking and pay payments in the downtown, and eventually, as other areas become more urban, we have to plan for that. So I'm very curious, what other interesting ideas do you think, before we get to land use, that we could think of?
Um, golly. Uh, it would be really nice to be able to, um, tie the prices more to the occupancy rate closer to real time, uh, because right now, um, you know, we increased, uh, the meter prices back in 2020, just before the, like, literally like, less than a week before the pandemic, I think. Um, but the time before that that we increased prices was like, ten, fifteen years prior to that, I think? It was a long time before that. Um, so it definitely takes us a while to kind of, like, catch on to like, oh, we need to change it there. Um, and with the, you know, the technology that exists today with the, the mobile payments, um, that is more of a reality and much easier to do. Um, so, you know, that's something that we could potentially look into, but...
Yeah, I, I believe San Francisco tried to do real-time in a number of years ago?
Yes, mhm. About twenty years ago when that book came out.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I have a few. First, I, I just wanted to ask about, um, you know, there's been a few times where I've gone downtown and I've walked into businesses, and one of the first things I hear about from owners and employees is their parking situation, and the fact that they have to run out in the middle of their day, um, to go feed the meter. Um, so it sounds like you're saying that some of the other solutions that you're proposing is help going to alleviate some of that experience for them, but do you have any other ideas in mind as to how we might be able to help those who are, who are working in our downtown, they're contributing to our community, they're paying taxes, uh, they're helping stimulate our local economy, and yet they've got to run out and feed the meter, uh, while they're working, so...
So, uh, one of the, the things in my slide deck here was, uh, educating downtown employees, because right now, they have options that don't require them to move their car or pay the meter every couple of hours, um, on, kind of on the outskirts of downtown, there are nine-hour meters, and by nine hours, we mean as long as it's paid between eight and five, you're good. Um, so, you know, they have the option of parking there, there are even permits that they can purchase, so they don't have to carry around, you know, tons and tons of, you know, quarters or whatever. Um, or they can use the app, you know, the app works at those nine-hour meters as well. Um, so that is currently an option, and we need to work on, you know, trying to get that message out and making that more clear. Uh, we also have leased lots that we sell permits for, although I understand that those often sell out pretty quick. Um, they're very popular, so, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, but you beat me to it about the messaging and the outreach, um, and just letting them know that that's a available option for them, um, to receive a permit, and, okay. So, um, where does, uh, the discussion, uh, that it's a work-plan item for us around a, uh, having a parking garage fit into this conversation around, uh, a briefing? This is something else we constantly hear about from the community, is, you know, years of discussion, when are we getting a parking garage? And now it's on our work plan, but where does that fit into this, uh, this briefing that we're receiving? Because I, I don't think I heard you mention it as...
Uh, I, so I, I trimmed that for, uh, presentation length, um, but that was one of the, the off-street parking, uh, recommendations in the, the plan, was to at least look into whether or not that was necessary. Um, the parking garage, uh, my predecessor worked a lot on trying to figure that out pre-pandemic. Um, when the pandemic hit, that all kind of got put on hold, because so much has changed since then. Um, but, uh, I know that it's something that we've looked into. Um, do you have anything to say about the, the garage? You probably know more than I do. This is Leonard Bauer's last council meeting, by the way.
Oh, he didn't have to say that. That threw me off. Leonard Bauer, Community Planning and Development Director, for a few more weeks. Um, yeah, it is on the work plan, uh, for the city to look at a parking garage, as you know, that there's some, some sites that we've, we've looked at, and some opportunities to do that as a mixed-use type of, of facility that might also provide housing or other uses. Um, and that's...
And that's something, you know, we're just getting started to relook at. We, meaning a bunch of departments, working together on that issue. So I think it's a little ways down the road. I think the idea, though, within the context of the parking strategy, as Chelsea pointed out, is that's to provide off-street options. And as some of our off-street options have been built upon to provide housing and other uses, you know, we lose a little bit while we're also adding residents downtown. And so being able to address that particularly in the core of downtown, and I just want to take this minute to point out, you know, we've got these very, very busy blocks, like Chelsea illustrated, in the core of downtown that have very high demand. And then we have quite a bit of our downtown that has very, very little demand. And most of that is in nine-hour meters at this point. And we are gradually removing the meters and just going to just pay app-paying, pay-by-phone option only. There's a lot of savings to that for the city because meter maintenance is one of our highest costs within the parking fund. It's incredibly high. I don't know the dollars off the top of my head, but it's in the tens of thousands per year just to keep up with our meters. It's a complaint you've received recently in emails. And so it's something that we want to address. And it also provides a lot more flexibility and moves us in that direction of at some point being able to do more demand-based pricing. So all of those things can help. But the parking garage is definitely a piece of that and we're working forward on that. So hopefully that answers the question for now.
It does. Thank you, Leonard, and congratulations on a job well done, your last council meeting. So along the options of off-street parking, you talked about your, the public-private partnerships with private lot owners. So I'm just curious if you happen to know about their ADA requirement responsibilities? And if we're.
Same as everyone else. So the ADA compliance stuff, that is federal law. So all, you know, all parking lots are required to meet certain, you know, certain benchmarks. So, yep.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure that as we're having those discussions, we want to make sure that there is adequate space.
You want to make sure to get that on the public record for them.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's all the questions that I have.
All right. Thank you so much.
Looks like we got some more questions in a moment. Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Vanderpool.
Oh, I didn't have any more questions. Just a comment around like education and outreach. So you coming here and making sure the full council is up to speed on the strategy is a really important part of that. So thanks for being here and this is really good prep for us on the Land Use Committee as we talk about what the next steps are.
Councilmember Vanderpool, followed by Councilmember Partially.
So would you prefer us building one parking garage or smaller instances around downtown? Because I've had a conversation before with Todd Cuts about this. And we've thought about, you know, instead of doing one big parking garage, you could do smaller ones so that not everyone gets out at one spot, if you know what I mean?
I would have to look at some of our data. Some of it might depend on where we can get the land for that. Because we don't want to go demolishing businesses downtown to build parking garages. There's limited spots that, you know, we can build currently. Parking garages are also exceedingly expensive. The average parking garage, the latest stats I've heard are they tend to cost $50,000 per stall per year to build and maintain. So they are not cheap. And the more stalls you can fit into one garage, generally that lowers the price a little bit, you know, kind of like buying in bulk. So building multiple smaller garages might actually, you know, be more expensive and do us a disservice.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Partially.
A comment and then, well, two comments. I remember that the Olympia Downtown Alliance had a meeting. And they were actually, I was listening to the shop owners, the small businesses saying they actually prefer people to get out and walk. Because what was the, if you get out and walk at least two blocks, you're more likely to hit three stores even though you were only coming down to see one. So it actually gets foot traffic into the buildings, just to say.
I never thought of that. Thanks.
Todd Cuts has the stats, so you should talk to him about that. But Leonard, we had, you got to talk about parking before your retirement. Isn't that great?
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we will move on to our final item of business this evening, item 6C, which is approval for continued exploration of creation of a tax audit team. And I am going to call for Erin B. Miller, our Finance Director, who's going to introduce Brandy Andrews, our Tax and License Analyst here at the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and good evening, council members. Erin B. Miller with the city's Finance Department. I appreciate the opportunity just to take a minute of your time to kick off this next agenda item. As the mayor said, Brandy Andrews will be coming up to give you a presentation. This is an idea that we started talking about in the fall of 2022. And Brandy and Thomas, Thomas Donnelly, right next to Brandy there, our Utility Billing and Tax Manager, have spent a lot of time and energy developing this idea to where we are now. And it's something that we presented to the Finance Committee back in November of 2023. And they were unanimous that we should bring this forward to full council for its consideration. Approval by the council would signal support for the Finance Department to continue this work toward creation of a tax audit team. It would also include authorizing three new FTE to establish the program. And then at a future budget adjustment, we would come back with the requisite budget authority need. And if there's no questions for me, let's get this going. And I'll invite Brandy to come up and give the presentation.
For something really fun. We didn't have enough fun in the last one. I'm Brandy Andrews, your Tax and License Financial Analyst. I've been here for three years and loved every day that I got the chance to work here. So thank you, Mayor Payne, and all the council members for your attention and time this evening. I need to stop and, yes, okay. I wanted to just give a little bit of background. The state authorizes cities like us to require businesses to get business licenses if they're operating in our jurisdiction and then also to submit business taxes to us. And currently, we operate these programs under voluntary compliance so that it's on the business to know the rules, to comply with them. And we have had one FTE in this, running both of these, the licensing and the business tax programs historically. And we've noticed some things in our data that we, that caused us to start thinking, maybe we need to put more effort in this area. So the road here, as Erin mentioned, we started thinking about business taxes and business tax compliance. A number of years ago, we looked at our data and I'm going to show you those key indicators on the next slide. But we also, sort of on a separate track, started thinking about allowing businesses to file online and pay their taxes online, realizing that maybe, you know, part of the, not issue per se, but part of the issue is that it's hard to get a checkbook out and write a check and pop something in the mail. It's just, things have moved on and we haven't yet. So we're excited about what we found out about opportunities to set up an online tax filing program. And I'm going to show you some slides for the idea that we found, the solution that we found that's looking really good. And we've also talked with other cities that have tax and license audit programs already and found out some great information. And we presented to the Finance Committee, as Erin mentioned, and now we're here today. So these are the important indicators in our own tax and licensing data. So this slide shows two time periods, 2019 compared with 2022. And it shows two metrics. One of them is the number of businesses who have business licenses. And you can see that number moved from 8,800 up to over 11,000 between those two time periods. That's a 30% increase. And then the second number that you see is the number of businesses licensed who have filed their BNO taxes in those two calendar periods. Because we have a requirement that everybody files a BNO tax regardless of whether they owe tax or not, those two numbers should go lockstep, but they haven't, right? So that is one really important thing that we noticed. And it caused us to start thinking, how can we solve this? In the last couple of years, some other information that we've learned, we've looked at our own tax code. And all of the cities with BNO taxes, we operate under a model code. That code already allows for us to do some audit activity on our taxes, our business taxes. We've looked at the code from other cities that have tax and license audit teams. And we can propose just a few minor tweaks to our own to make it easier, I guess, and things more clear, like language changes and things like that. And what we've learned from other cities with tax and license audit programs already is that they report a significant improvement in their voluntary compliance. Just knowing that somebody's going to look maybe encourages more compliance. So that's a great thing. And all the cities we talked to, that includes Tacoma and Seattle, Taquilla, Birmingham, they also report that programs like these, they fully fund themselves because you can discover tax revenue that you should be getting just by doing these kinds of activities. And on a separate track, like I mentioned, we've been exploring electronic tax filing systems. There's not very many out there and we looked at all of them. And really, none of them brought any greater benefits to doing it manually, which is how we do it now. And so we, Thomas and I attend a tax and license roundtable meeting quarterly. And we happened to hear just a stray comment from one of the cities, City of Birmingham, that they had built, they didn't mention that specifically, but they made another comment that caused us to reach out to them and say, you know, what do you guys do? And they built their own system for online tax filing. And so I'm going to show you that because they have offered it to us for free for our use. And so it's just a really great opportunity. So about our proposed program that we're asking you today about approving, it will be focused on these three things, compliance and outreach and education and also auditing. So compliance is basically for those who do file or those businesses operating here, making sure they have their business license and that they do file their taxes and then working with them to come into compliance if maybe they've missed a year, that sort of thing. And then the second one there, outreach and education, it's probably the most important one because with COVID, there's, there was a lot of turnover in businesses and institutional knowledge about municipal tax rules. It just isn't there a lot of times. And so providing a way for them to, businesses to know what the rules are and to find the right information to comply. Because, you know, businesses are, they want to do the right thing. They want to obey all the laws. You know, every business that I talk to, it's always the case, oh, I didn't know. Or, oh, I thought that was the same that I file with the state online. They just, you know, don't know. And then the third one, auditing. For those that send their tax filing in, we would sample some of them every year and do a more traditional audit. So what this new program would not do is increase tax rates. We're not looking to add any new taxes with this program and/or increase requirements or make it harder for the businesses to comply. It's just the opposite. We've done some work estimating both the revenues that we would likely find by having this tax and license audit program and also the expenses that we will spend in doing so. And this slide shows you not only the year-one estimates, but also out a couple of years. And we're red-boxing the expenses in year one there just to give you a little bit of detail. As Erin mentioned, we would like to hire two full-time auditors and one program assistant. So those, those are the biggest expenses, obviously. But some of the other ones are professional services and supplies. You know, we may need to buy some software or get some training. The education and outreach and startup costs, buying new computers and things like that. And the last one there, reclass accountant, that is because my role would change. I'm the tax and license person now, but I would step up to be more of a lead and be managing the day-to-day work for the program. So that is a little summary about the program we're proposing. I wanted to turn our attention quickly and just tell you about this great opportunity for the online tax filing system. Like I said, we caught this comment, you know, piqued our interest. We reached out to the City of Birmingham and I spoke with the person who's in my role there. And she told me that they're, they have a brilliant IT person and he built, in collaboration with her, this online tax filing system. And these are some of the details about it. It's website access and the data, the tax data lives securely within their servers there at the City of Birmingham. It allows a business person to, or the one who's doing the filing, to register immediately. A lot of times, if you're trying to register with the state, it's like a, you know, week-long process. But if you're a business owner and you realize, tomorrow I have to pay my City of Olympia BNO tax, they could, if we had implemented this system, go online, register, get immediate registration and be able to pay right then and there. And they are then faced with a very simple tax form. Enter your basic numbers, the tax is calculated. They have a one-button click to a payment site. And it provides the business owner and us with a PDF of their submitted filing. And in this system, uses some of the same vendors that we do. We have and use in-house already. Our system of record for the BNO taxes is a program called MicroFlex. And that's what they use. And they also use Paymentis, and so do we. So those are some nice alignments there. We've had some conversations with our IT department and they're in the process now of looking into that side of things. They call their system Bolts, Birmingham Online Tax System. And the benefits that we see to this, it's clean and simple from the taxpayer's perspective. And it allows us to transition away from a lot of paper. I have every year six to eight boxes of paper that I send off to the offsite. And it's just a lot of churn. And it uses programs and vendors we already have. And our internal accounting reconciliation will be greatly simplified. We have a long process now with all the paper and data entry. And the City of Birmingham has had three years of success with this home-built system. And their business owners like it, which is a great testimonial. So I'm going to give you a little glimpse of it. We've got some screenshots here. We received a demo from the City of Birmingham and it was awesome. This is the landing page. Once you log in, it allows not only a single business owner to file their taxes, but if you are an accountant and filing for six people's business, they can do them all at once, one sign-in. It's really great. And so they click one button there to file their tax returns. And this is the form that they get. Very simple data entry. It calculates the tax due. And then they get this PDF. Very simple data entry, it calculates the tax due and then they get this PDF, nice summary of what they've done and then they go off to pay. So it's a great system and it's not, we were expecting, when we got the demo, some kind of rinky-dink little spreadsheet, but no, it's quite sophisticated, so we're really thrilled. And then just the last couple of slides, it's always great to think ahead of time, if you're gonna start a new program, how you track yourself to know that you're doing a good job. A program like this, we want to start with some more qualitative tracking metrics. First couple of years, we would focus on establishing our procedures and finding data that will help us with identifying non-compliance and also spend a good amount of time thinking about how we outreach to businesses, how we engage with them and making the tone of our audit program not negative, making it more of a collaboration because we really appreciate businesses and we appreciate the fact that they, you know, do their business here in Olympia. And finally, just looking forward, Erin already touched on this, we're asking for your approval for this new program. And if you gave us the approval, we would, we're poised to, you know, start hiring. And we have also done a review of our own municipal code and had an initial meeting with Mark Barber about some potential tweaks, just very minor tweaks. And then we'd be coming back at a future city council meeting to talk about a budget amendment. So that is all I had. I welcome your questions.
Thank you very much, Brandy. And it's my understanding it's your first presentation before us as well.
It is.
So congratulations.
No drawings, but. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Well done, well done. There's two things. One that kind of comes from the Finance Committee conversations. We talked to Mike Reed about, you know, is this gonna be punitive to some of our small businesses and paying the taxes, putting them over the top into not being solvent as a business? But Mike Reed said maybe it's also an opportunity to connect certain businesses that are on the fringe to some of the help mechanisms we have. Are we gonna have an access or connection point with some of those help moments with the auditor? Are we gonna build that into our program?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Great answer, love that. The second is, and I can't remember the answer to this, if we actually start generating, if I looked at the numbers correctly, yeah, that's probably better to do. We're gonna be potentially generating somewhere between three seventy and five hundred thousand dollars. Where's that money gonna, what area of our budget is that money gonna land?
It, I would offer Erin to come up and answer that question.
That would be BNO tax revenue that comes into the general fund and eleven percent of that, by the agreement, would go into the parks, for parks' use. But that's a general fund activity, so it would hit the general fund.
Would it be possible to channel some of that into some of our small business work and our economic development?
Yes, if the council chooses to do that, that's something that we could certainly do.
Because right now, economic development, if I'm not mistaken, a lot of the money that we bring in is from selling pieces of property. A portion of that goes into the Economic Development Fund. So just a thought to put it out there to the council to consider, not all of it, but maybe a portion that generates a little revenue stream for Mike Reed's work.
Sorry, Councilmember Partially just made a point that I really agree with, so I'm sitting with that for a moment. Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Good. Brandy, it's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you for presenting tonight.
Hi, guys.
So I appreciate your very generous language about how and why some businesses have not been filing. And I think it's true that for some folks, it's a matter of education, or as Councilmember Partially was saying, some people might be running a business that's so unprofitable that they can't pay their taxes. I spent most of my career chasing business tax fraud, especially employer tax fraud. And I have to say that from my perspective, it's all of that educating to compliance is really valuable, but I also want to recognize that there's a value to the city and to the community of having a level playing field where if we decide that this is a reasonable tax, that people make it part of their business plan to pay the tax and that we capture that lost revenue to the city. And I think that's the most fair to taxpayers, that's the most fair to honest businesses or businesses who've already been in compliance, and it's the most fair to the employees of those businesses who are in compliance. So I just think there's better ways to compete as a business than figuring out ways to not participate in paying taxes. So I'm very much in support of standing this up and I also recognize and acknowledge that it's initially very much an education and a counseling into compliance. I know you don't have to come in with clobbering people, but we do want to have a level playing field where if you're doing business, and could you describe, in about 2017, we created an exemption so that if you're a micro-business, a very small business, you're exempt from business and occupation tax. Do you happen to know that threshold?
There's a threshold of twenty thousand dollars for a small business that if you, your gross taxable in the year falls below that or is below that, then you submit your tax form, but you can zero out the tax due. So it's twenty thousand dollars.
Right. We had somebody who was an author locally, who had brought that to us several years ago, saying, since I make seven thousand dollars a year in this business, you know, what? So I just wanted to acknowledge that we do have an exemption already if it's a very small amount of revenue, but we still ask for filing. And my question would be, so the rental registry went into effect March 1st and that also, I believe that having a business license with the city and submitting the filings is a part of registering as a landlord? And so I'm wondering, in this last couple of months, have you had tens, hundreds or thousands of new filings based on people submitting their rental registries?
We, I've seen an uptick in the business licensing question, volume coming in from those seeking to comply with the new regulations. There is an exemption for long-term rental business income in our BNO tax laws. You're exempt from the entire BNO tax chapter if you are earning only long-term rental income in your business, so they don't have to file.
So they don't have to file either? Do they, maybe this is another question, is a business license required as part of this registration or do they just have to file?
Business license.
The business license is required, but the BNO filings are not required. Great, thank you. I know that's a sidebar to all this, but I appreciate that, that's another topic of the evening. Thank you, Brandy.
You're welcome.
That's a great catch, Councilmember Gilman, thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you, Brandy. There's a lot in here that we've been waiting, I think, for some time to have a discussion about. Yesterday, or Sunday, I put my BNO return, I'm under the threshold for my sole proprietorship in the mail, to the city treasurer and I was like, well, I don't even know who that is. But tonight, we appointed Erin, the city treasurer. So please make sure that all of those boxes are routed to his office.
Will do, will do.
Okay, because they shouldn't be in yours, just by the municipal code, right? Okay. This week, I've had conversations with two different groups of people around business licenses and so I don't need any responses, but I'll just throw them out so you have them in your head. One around short-term rental income that comes to us through lodging tax might come through Airbnb or VRBO's platform and we might not be able to directly connect that revenue to a business or a business license that's operating in our city. So I heard that from two other cities at an LTAC chairs meeting the other day, so kind of throw that out. And then I also heard about a towing company that's operating in our downtown that doesn't have a business license or a towing permit. And so I'll just throw those out there as other kinds of business that happen in our community that need to be licensed. And then to Councilmember Gilman's point, I think, I love that we're customer service first. I assume that there's a way to settle penalties at the management level based on compliance. But I do think that we are in an era where businesses calculate part of the cost of doing business by avoiding regulation. I've seen it in the Clean Air Agency recently too many times. And so I'd just like to know a little bit about what tools are in place when we do run into that. So what kind of a compliance toolbox do you have around fees and penalties and negotiating settlement so that we can make sure that we do get everyone into compliance?
The model code that we operate under for the BNO tax has RCW-based penalties and fees. And so just a few examples, late penalty, of course. There's a penalty, so the late penalty varies based on how long your past due goes from nine percent of the tax you owe to nineteen percent of the tax you owe to twenty-nine percent and then levels out there. And there are a number of other penalties. There's a penalty that if you don't follow the instructions or if it's found that you're deliberately trying to under-report, so there are quite a few things in there already and the amounts are set by the RCW.
Well, Erin's gonna add a little bit.
Sorry about that. And I just want to add, when we set this up, when I set this up at a different city, one of the things that we did is update our code and for habitual offenders of this, we put in that we can shut the business down and also that it was a criminal offense. So while Brandy's absolutely right, the model ordinance does have that, there are other avenues. We're not walking down that road quite yet, but I just wanted to say that some other cities have set up some additional penalties.
Great, I appreciate that, that we don't set fees and penalties in a vacuum, they're set by the state and that we have a little bit more power and control through our municipal code. And just speaking for myself, I hope that when you bring the package, you bring that authority to the code before we start the program.
Great, thanks.
Great points. Any other questions or comments? So I just have a few points to make. So first of all, I recognize that voluntary compliance language from the State Department of Revenue. And I think specifically on the outreach and education component that you were mentioning a moment ago, is when you're doing that engagement, is to explain why voluntary compliance is important. I think for those of us who are in government and spink government lingo or those of us who are educated, we understand where, what we're doing with the money that we're taxing businesses for, which Councilmember Partially just spoke to a moment ago, which she also just suggested that we would use it for Olympia Strong, which is our economic opportunity plan and there's a number of initiatives that we'll need to fund in the coming years and I agree with that point. But back to my point around tax administration, education, another thing to potentially look into is, I'm not sure how you are going to be using our equity framework that city staff are supposed to use, but language access is something that I know our State Department has really taken a, taken some action on and you specifically called out unlicensed businesses and that leads me to, I don't want to assume that everybody's just evading, you know, the law and trying to do the right thing, but rather, is there a language barrier or is there some other factor or reason as to why people aren't voluntary complying? And that might be a significant piece of that is considering equity when you do that engagement. Specifically, when the staff report says currently all businesses operating in Olympia have identical access to information about local business licensing and taxation and equal is not equitable. So that might not be the approach that we need to take. And then it says this program targets such disparities in our business community and so, not so much a question, but just rather a suggestion of when we're doing that, that we give that some thought and consideration as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, and thank you so much. Yes, and so with that, I need a motion.
I would like to move that we approve the finance staff to continue to work towards creating the team. And I'm assuming that we all understand what the team is, which is the BNO Audit Team.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, so that concludes all of our business items for this evening, so we'll move on to council reports. I'll begin with the mayor's report. So I haven't reported, well, we haven't reported last week because it was a four-hour meeting and we wanted to get out of here, so. But I'll just be really brief. So on March 28th, I attended the Arc of Aging Murals Dedication. If you all remember, we had that, we approved that dedication to be installed in the Olympia Center, that work of art. And it's now there and so I attended the dedication to speak. And it's one of my favorite murals in the community and so I'm glad to see it somewhere where it's gonna be protected. And it's, there's been some upgrades to it to make it a little bit more modern, I guess you could say, for the times that we're in. So if you haven't seen it, please go check it out. I did meet with the Olympia Yacht Club's Community and Government Advisory Committee just in, just to have a conversation with them around conversations regarding the dischutes estuary and some of the impacts that will be made, not just to the yacht club, but to downtown and the north side of the bridge. In my opinion, some of the conversations seem very sort of lake-centric and so I do, I do have some questions myself about, you know, what are the impacts, you know, on the north side and what are we gonna do to mitigate those, specifically around the fact that we already experienced flooding on Fourth Avenue from the King Tides? And so I have a lot of questions about sediment going over to that side after dam removal and so on. And so very much looking forward to engaging with them and others around that discussion. I attended the employee, the LGBTQ Employee Resource Group for city employees a few weeks ago on April 3rd and that was a really, really fun opportunity to just engage with city staff. And I asked after I gave my comments if they wanted me to leave because I recognized it was their space, but they said I was welcome to stay and it was really nice to just see everybody engaging with one another and, you know, kind of let their hair down, but still keeping it professional, obviously. And that was, I enjoyed that quite a bit. And of course, Darian was in the room, so it's always a good time and a laugh when she's present. And then obviously Danny mentioned, I attended the Community Development Block Grant Tour with Rep Strickland on April 4th. Attended the, last week before our meeting, the South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanities Ribbon Cutting for their new office building, which is at 910 on Fifth Avenue. Really looking forward to seeing what the future of Fifth Avenue will look like considering it's diagonally across from the armory and so I can envision a lot of new art projects and just the beautification of that area changing over time. So very much looking forward to what could come of that space. We're done with special meetings, I think, for now, in community livability and public safety. We made it. We made it through all of our advisory boards and committee appointments. So Mayor Potem's not here, so I'll just mention that. And then lastly, I just want to again recognize Leonard's final meeting. So you are gonna, you're surprised again, really? But you are going to be deeply missed. I think that obviously you are taking a lot of institutional knowledge with you, but I know you're not far, and I know that we're in good hands with Tim. So, you know, just thank you for so much for everything that you've done for the city. And I'm sure you'll hear more from some of the other members of council, but best of luck to you in your retirement. And I will start to my right with Councilmember Madron.
It has been a little while since we did reports last, but I'm going to try to keep it to like the most interesting bite-sized pieces here. Regional Housing Council met on March 27th. One of the decisions we had to make is that there's an affordable housing support program at Lot to discount the capacity development charges for affordable housing. And there's an allocation, like each jurisdiction got 75 ERUs, which I can answer later what that is, if you want me to. And so with our Lansdale Point project in the city of Olympia, this is the apartments near the Olympia Food Co-op on the east side, sixty percent AMI or below, multiple bedroom apartments, so designed to accommodate families. We had some of our ERU credits left, but not enough to cover the project. So Lacey contributed fourteen of their units. And then there was a shared pool for all the jurisdictions to access that had the rest of them that helped us get over the finish line with that. And the RHC did recommend to Lot to approve Olympia's use of most of those shared pool units so we could get that for this project. We also talked about, we have some ongoing work on how we want to respond to the needs of manufactured home communities, and how the RHC could support communities, you know, when their land goes up for sale or other challenges that they have, you know, that would lead up to a land sale. And, you know, staff have done some work, largely county staff, have done some work around, you know, how many manufactured home communities are even in Thurston County? And best they can tell, it's 126. And that's probably an undercount because they all, you know, they're not as easy to identify across the board, which equates to 4,300 units. And again, probably an undercount. But they're working through some of the data that they've been able to get, and they're going to, there's a subcommittee of one of our advisory committees that's working on developing some policy options over the next few months. So that would include acquisition, you know, what ways could we help people become the owners of the land, you know, whether it's financing or other ways, but also looking at rehabilitation, relocation costs, things like that. Just how we can help provide support when people find that, you know, the land's gone up for sale beneath them and there's not much they can do. Thurston Regional Planning Council met on the 5th of April. We got briefed on the industrial land study. So they've done a study of the current land zoned for industrial needs in the county to determine, you know, is there enough? Because they're seeing a lot of rezone requests. And one of the big things they saw that, there's a lot of, one of the big challenges that they're seeing is that the lands that are zoned for industry uses are small parcels, five-acre parcels, 10-acre parcels. And usually, you know, if you're going to be building something for an industrial purpose, you need something more than that. So I expect more will be coming of this study so that we can better meet those needs. You know, one of the members of the TRPC was talking about some similar studies that were done in King County, and how when they talked about industrial lands, you know, she referred to them, or up in this process up north, they referred to industrial lands as like the laundry room of a house. Like, you know, you never show off your laundry room. It's not like, you know, your big point of pride when you're giving somebody a tour of your house, but you really do need it for, you know, certain functions. And so I thought that was interesting. And we also got an update on the regional transportation plan and the incorporation of climate change with HB 1181. You know, we're all having to incorporate climate change into our planning efforts. And so TRPC is working on that in the context of the regional transportation plan, so more to come on that. And then finally, Lot met on April 10th, and we did in fact approve the recommendation from the Regional Housing Council around the Affordable Housing Support Program. So, thought that was fun. But we did get briefed on this framework for effective utility management. This is leading up to a retreat that we're doing at the end of this month to help inform our strategic plan for the next few years. And we got some other updates on the safety program, digester system improvements. For those of us that use the RV dump site at Lot, just know that once that digester system improvement project is in place, they're going to switch to being open only on the weekends to bring your RV down, rather than just during the week as it is now, because Franklin's going to be closed for a long time. I'm sorry, Jim. I knew that that would, that's what they were saying. They were saying it's probably better that way because currently they're only open weekdays. So, you know, to get down there, you kind of have to take off of work. But now it's going to switch to just being open on weekends, probably for a couple of years while this project is being done. And I'll just finally also offer my congratulations to Leonard. Last council meeting, and we'll miss you on the Land Use and Environment Committee. It's been a pleasure working with you over these years, and I think it's actually just, it's been a privilege to be able to learn from you. And I'm really, really glad to have served our council at the same time that you've been here at the city so that we could work together and I could, you know, have access to this great wealth of knowledge that you have, working on growth management and planning for many, many years in the state of Washington. So thank you for your service.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? All right, Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, it has been a minute since we've done reports, so I had to like cross some stuff out so it didn't go on and on and on. But, yeah, so, big items. So I went to Fire Ops between now and last time we talked, which is crazy because that felt like that was a month ago. Because, I mean, I mean, yeah, but that was absolutely wonderful. Probably get more on that. There's photos and everything. I really appreciated doing that. I don't, Fire Chief's not, he's checking something. I really loved Fire Ops. It was absolutely awesome. He's looking at the pictures, yeah. So the other, a couple weeks ago, I went to the Music City event that Mike Reed held. It was pretty awesome. You know, what was really interesting is I think that some members of the public realized that I was there, or it was kind of like, the public comment, the comment at the end started turning into public comment. And so they were talking about like, things that need to be done on preserving venues, noise ordinances, strengthening the arts economy, but also said that we've been doing a lot of good work. And so, I mean, it is fascinating that just going to an event incognito and then people start talking about what we should be doing, and I'm just like writing it down in the back. So, other things. So Coalition of Neighborhood, or the Council of Neighborhood Associations, they're continuing their survey of sidewalks. They're, you know, a continued theme is, you know, every neighborhood I've talked to, it seems to be, there seems to be a speeding problem, there seems to be issues along that. They have seen an addition of renters in their association and on their boards. So they're trying, that trend is continuing, and I hope it continues to. The Transportation Policy Board did meet in person, which was pretty great because it was a very lively conversation, and we did talk about the regional transportation plan, which actually diverged into a conversation about we need large projects. But we couldn't figure out which large project we'd like to do, which is the whole difficult problem with these conversations because we really, huh? Anyway, you know, Chair Ryder really wanted us to move towards a large project and get a lot of that federal funding, but again, we hadn't decided on what that means, right? It would be really, you know, we all haven't gotten to that part of it. But we would all really want to get a hold of that federal dollars and get something moving along transportation. It's just a matter of what. I, on Sunday, met with the residents of the Village Co-op. They are super awesome people. They hit me with questions for an hour and a half, and it was pretty awesome. Some of it is Tumwater issues, in which I will be reaching out to council members at Tumwater about that intersection and whatnot. But they also had questions about, and I will, hopefully Jay will be well enough tomorrow for me to talk to him about it, about, you know, issues around zoning on soundproofing, about the lack of, speeding again came up. That's Yelm and Henderson, and so that's definitely an accident zone. Also, a lot of these residents said, you know, they would offer, they offered citizens in research, like they would like to have more participation in being involved, particularly an interest in next year. They're doing a lot, a lot of the members were involved in legislative lobbying last year, and being involved in ARP, AARP, and involved in the senior lobby, and working with us to see if there's any common interests. So I think that was a good conversation to have. I also went to the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Event, but I will leave that for Lisa, or council member, anyway. Anyway, the evergreen thing in me is really needs to, anyway. Lastly, I would like to congratulate Leonard. I've only been on the council for a short period of time, but you've answered a million crazy questions about, why haven't we done this? Are we gonna, you know, have we done this in the past? So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? I'll just say that I did speak with Mayor Ryder about his feeling about what's happening with the Transportation Improvement Board around finding a project of regional significance. I have to say, I agree, because the bipartisan infrastructure money is not money that may not ever come again for a really long time. And it just shocks me that we don't have a project of regional significance that we can identify to point to to get, you know, access to those dollars, especially, you know, given some of the requirements that the federal government has, which is obviously wanting to see that there's some state investment in a project. So in my opinion, we're behind, and hopefully we can identify a project soon. Councilmember Gilman.
Great, and I'm just going to respond briefly first. Councilmember Vanderpool, your days of incognito, both by political appointment and sartorial choice, are over.
Yeah.
You will not be incognito in Olympia.
That's unfortunate.
And we welcome you being recognized around town. And Mayor Payne, your comment about a project of regional significance leads me, I just want to briefly report that last week I was in Washington DC for the American Public Transit Association Conference. A lot of the time was talking about zero emissions, about both battery electric and hydrogen fuel cell options, and infrastructure evolving along there. So that was a lot of the conversation. But a highlight for me was I had a chance to meet Representative Earl Blumenauer from Portland in his last year in Congress. And one of the strong admonitions he had was, okay, we passed this big transportation package, now your job is to go access it. And, you know, right up what you're describing. How do we come up with projects of regional significance that can be of a scale and at a speed to access that money? And they were just, he's been for a long time a champion of a notion called livable cities. And I just wanted to toss out, he believes that the transportation alternatives create a more cohesive community effect, and that it's, you know, as many people believe, it's okay to pay fees and taxes if you're getting the community infrastructure that you want to have. And he said something that I wrote down on my tablet as I was talking with him in a reception. He said, you know, I don't think it's humane or thoughtful to make people drive out of the city until they can afford housing. So I'll leave it with that.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Partially.
I just have to say, he's from Portland, so they did intentional planning where Max was going to go, and then they purposely seeded housing in certain aspects along Max that were away from a lot of known areas to grow, and that what they've done is an amazing job with that. Councilmember Vanderpool, I'm good with Lisa. I did my internship at Cornell, and hopefully I am not going to offend anyone, but I got over titles after a year of being there, where we weren't allowed to be our first names the entire time we were there. So I'm good with that. I have two things to report. The climate retreat was just last night. It was amazing. You bring all the people together from four jurisdictions, the Community Action Work Group, the staff. Most of the jurisdictions we brought are alternate because the more voices in the room, the better the ideas. We started off with interjurisdictional sharing. I'm just going to highlight a few of these because I remember when we built this plan, I remember not a lot happening, and then each jurisdiction came and gave us a small piece of what they're actually doing. It's very exciting. For example, in Lacey, they did the rebate match with PSE, and they so far have done over $80,000 in matching dollars, which means $160,000 on projects like washers and dryers, heat pumps, insulation, smart thermostats, windows, ceilings. Pretty cool. They've also got 12 new EV vehicles. They established their Soul Smart for silver. The next jurisdiction was us, and of course, you know, kind of bragging on us, but we talked about Energize Olympia. We've all heard about that. We have already talked about our parking EV charging that we're all very intimate in. What I want to go is to the other jurisdictions. For example, in Tumwater, they also got their Soul Smart designation of silver. They've put an EV, they're almost finishing up their tree inventory, which is going to allow them to not only know what they need to do for zoning and code changes to preserve trees, but they're able to actually look at what their carbon sequestration is. Thurston County is looking at where they're going to put fast charging, including two in downtown Tenino. And they also got the Soul Smart, which is only the second county in Washington, with King County being the only other one. But the four major jurisdictions in Thurston County now are Soul Smart, which is also a first. It's pretty cool. They're also looking at their Healthy Forest Project. Then we got the greenhouse gas update, which was not quite as good, but not as bad as it could have been. I'm trying to really quickly go through my, overall, from 2010 to 2021, we're hoping to get 2022 and 2023 shortly. Hold on, I got the wrong page. We got a overall decrease in 20, from 2015 to 2020 of 18.8%. Some of that is the pandemic, but as pointed out to us, CETA, the Clean Energy Transformation Act, was also coming online. So PSE was getting rid of their coal, and so it's not all pandemic. But between 20 and 2021, we went back up 4.3%. We are nowhere near getting close to our stated goal for 2030, which is 85% countywide, and I believe ours is supposed to be 59%. We are still going up. We can hope that all the state plans, clean energy, the fuel efficiency, and everything else brings us down in the next four to six years, but we also have a potential overturning of the Climate Commitment Act coming this November. We then went on to what are we going to do for our regional initiative? And as if you'll remember, the regional initiative last year was to get an ordinance for at-the-point-of-sale energy audit. point-of-sale energy audit countywide. That is going to be coming to us probably early 2025, early 2024. But they've already started the, with the switches on, the process of programs and connecting people to those who can do the work, as well as incentives and grants to be able to get the retrofits on their house. Now, the, the committee got stymied. We came down to two potential initiatives, and we were really dead set locked. One was working on density in the 20-minute, 15-minute walkable neighborhood. The other was continuing our work on the energy efficiencies in buildings and electrification of buildings. So what the staff is going to do is they're going to go back and bring us back, what does this mean? And their criteria is going to be, which of these projects can do a, require regional cooperation to get this work done instead of individual jurisdictions working on their own, right? So is there a regional aspect to this, like getting the whole county to do point-of-sale? The second part is financial and staff time. Do we have the staff time to adequately do this project in a year? And as you know, our staffs, and I just mentioned it, each jurisdiction staffs are working overtime. They said, I think it was about 5% of their, no, 25% of their time, did I get that right, is being the, the county mitigation plan, and the rest of the time is the individual jurisdictions' actions. So pulling them away to do a regional project needs to make sure that it can be achievable financially and stay staff-driven. That is the climate. My other one is easy. It is the Jazzcom Report. And we got, the major thing we got was our assessment from the architect. For those of you who have not been there, the building is old. It has only three to four years left of life, and that's still going to cost us about $3 million to get there. Sort of like a particular city's municipal jail. And what was interesting was that the architects that are looking at this, including the city statutes and/or codes, we would not be able to put the new building, even remodeled on our current property because of wetlands and everything else. And they figured that we would need two to three acres of buildable land, because current building is about 8,800 square feet, whereas they see we need 2,300 square feet. And the building they would have to put on our current property would not fit at all. So they're in, right now, Lacey and the Animal Services is in a land hunt. So if we have any land that we can put forward for the Joint Animal Service Commission, we should be looking at that. I've also sent them to the school districts, and all the jurisdictions are going to go back to and see if we have any land that's available, with our understanding that if we actually do find the land, there's going to be property in Martin Way that could potentially become housing if they sell it to us. So, you know, might be a nice little trade there. The last two things we did was we did a budget amendment to increase the amount of money it's going to take to get an assessment and a building built. And then lastly, we voted on a contract with the Nisqually Tribe to be able to provide services for them, because they do not have animal services currently. And so we're going to do that as we are doing with Yelm and the joint base Lewis.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Parshley? Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. That's a really high-quality set of reports. Thank you. You all are doing really good work. Carpenter Road, Martin Way, county property. It's been proposed for a tiny home village twice. I bet they would take houseless kitties and dogs. Leonard, thank you. When you got here, I don't know if you know this, you probably do, people were telling, well, people being the, the ones up here, were telling Steve Hall, change the culture of community development every single day. And you implemented that. And you took community planning and development in the city of Olympia from the one that was the most talked about for not being good, to maybe the one that's the least talked about because it's the best. And I hear that from people in other parts of our community who do business here. And we've changed a lot because of you, and, and the team, and your leadership. And I'll give Keith Staley an accolade there, too, because he was a big part of bringing you here. And just thank you. Thank you for the gifts you gave to the city. And the thing I'm most excited about is that you're going to go out in retirement, semi-retirement, and give those gifts to the rest of the state. And that's really a great, a great legacy of public service. So thank you, thank you, thank you. So last week, I, I'm, in my day job, I'm on the Washington State VOAD, which is Voluntary Organizations Active in Disaster. And so last week, I was at a church in Kent with a whole bunch of mostly faith-based disaster response organizations and a whole bunch of emergency managers from cities and counties from the Mountain West states. So think Rockies West. And something that stood out for me that was interesting was the emergency managers were talking about the new climate requirement for the comprehensive plan. Because they're saying, and I had not, it had not crossed my mind, that part of the adaptation, especially in slopes, is that they might not be buildable anymore. And so looking at lands that are not, no longer buildable because of the, the change in our climate, I think in my mind it was about the climate mitigation plan and not the, the, you know, the adaptations that we have to make over time. So I just wanted to articulate that out loud here because it was, it was a stopping point for me, like, oh, that, that's a little bit bigger than I thought of when you think about how water and, and dirt flow have changed and have changed with, with, with climate change. So just something that I wanted to articulate. And then last week, also, the Clean Air Agency, we had our second in-person meeting since February of 2020. We had all but two board members here in Olympia in person. Our region is the whole peninsula, so that's, that's a, a great feat. We went to Silver Springs Organic and did a tour, and it was pretty cool. They can take the compost from the bin to a fine certified organic mulch in 30 days. And they're doing it with air, airflow from the floor, so positive and negative. So the 85% under their new permit, permit has to be negative. So they're sucking air through the pile and then moving it to a filtration system that if you've been around construction, hog fuel is the, is the filtration system. So big chunks of wood in a pile with the vent going through the pile. And a pile of wood will filter the, the volatile compounds out of the air for like five years before they replace it. It kind of blew my mind. I think of like, you know, complex filtration systems that I've seen in different careers I've had. And, and it was, it was just really fascinating to see the work that has gone into that facility, which started like Brady Trucking, which is where our compost is going now in Mason County, with just piles out on the dirt. And the Clean Air Agency started getting hundreds of calls a year about the smell. And now they have a five-acre roof with a floor filtration system. And they have a Good Neighbor program, which I did not know. So if you live out in the county, if you live five miles, within five miles of Silver Springs, you can bring your yard waste there for free, and you can get a free yard of mulch a year. So I thought that was pretty cool. We also talked at our cleaner meeting about the director, Jeff Johnston, sending a letter out to the cities and counties in the region about comprehensive planning to make sure that they're considering air quality in their climate conversations around comprehensive plans. Monday, I met with the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee chairs from Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, and the county. Yelm was there in spirit. They had some contract negotiations they had to work on. We did a really great conversation overview of, of what we're all doing. We looked at possibilities around aligning timelines, looking at our budgets, possibly aligning our applications. What I found is something that I find a lot of, a lot of the time in this work is that often the staff are just way beyond where we are. We're like, we need to do this. Well, Jim, we actually already tried, or we're already talking about it, you know, those kinds of things. And found that particularly Lacey and Tumwater, or Lacey and Olympia have been talking at, at great length about how to align those programs. And, and so to that point, the staff will continue to meet. And then this year, there's, they're talking about having a one bidders conference for Lodging Tax Advisory Committees. So all of the applicants can come and have all five jurisdictions in the room, ask questions about the differences, and, and really get to understand the program as we talk about whether there's other ways to, to be better aligned. And then another outcome of that conversation is just having an annual report prepared by one of the staff from one of the jurisdictions that we can all see. So the chairs and the, and the committees can see kind of what work is happening in other places around the region, as we try to put heads in beds and prove that, which is the hardest part, as I'm learning. So, and then my last comment is I've also been learning a little bit more than I thought I would about sediment since the beginning of this year, as I'm representing us at the committee around the, the estuary restoration and the long-term interlocal agreement negotiation for the sediment management plan. And I have to say, it's a little bit difficult because, you know, Councilwoman Madron and I are tasked with churning a negotiation that we weren't at into an interlocal agreement, and really wanting to push to get better outcomes for Olympia all the way along. And so that's what we're doing. We're learning. We're leaning in. Maybe I'm, well, I'm trying really hard not to break anything and get the best, the best outcome for, for the city and, and the region from that conversation. But it's just right in line with your conversation about, I think our whole community needs to do a, a really deep dive into sediment and learning about where it comes from, where it needs to go, because that's the science that's driving this restoration that we're about to do. And we don't have a lake. We have a retention pond that's really just a sludge pond. And I'm so excited that we are going to be at a place to both remove the dam, restore the estuary, and maintain the sediment long term through a partnership that was built by the group that went before us. So it's, it's fun and complex, and we've got our sleeves rolled up. So that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? All right. Assistant City Manager Sullivan, take us home.
Thank you. Well, I too want to acknowledge Leonard Bauer on his upcoming retirement on May 3rd, after 35 years of public service. And we are thrilled that he spent 10 of those years here with us at the city of Olympia as both Deputy Director of Community Planning and Development and the Director for the past four years. He's done an incredible job serving the city, and he's one of the most knowledgeable people in all of Washington State about land use and comprehensive planning. So you all received an announcement about upcoming festivities for his retirement. He wants to keep it low-key, so we'll keep it at that. But tonight, your last business meeting, thank you, Leonard, for all that you have done for the city and all of us. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, with that, with no further business, before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.